Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Committee of A Whole for April 3rd. And if the clerk could please read the role.
Councilmember Wood?
Here.
Councilmember Garza?
Here.
Councilmember Hussein?
Here.
Councilmember Spatafor?
Here.
Councilmembers Fitzley?
Here.
Councilmember Jackson?
Present.
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Councilmember Cost?
Here.
Eight members present.
And with that, we have the minutes for March 27th. Councilmember Spatafor?
Madam President, I move the minutes for March 27th, 2023.
We have the minutes for March 27th. Are there any questions or concerns in the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Hosed, passed unanimously. Before I open up this for public comment, I have a statement that I'd like to make. And then we will open it up for public comment, and then we will have the different parties come down to the table to go over the questions and the information that we are seeking tonight. When I think of where we are today, I want to make it perfectly clear that all of us are culpable in this situation. Counsel, the administration, EDP, and code compliance. And the reason I say that is because, first of all, counsel has passed budgets and approved staffing. We have passed ordinances and assumed that they were being upheld. And when I talk about the administration, what I mean is the different complaints and things that have been taken to the administration over the years, not only with this administration, but with the previous administration. And we did not see any resolve to some of those problems. When I talk about the EDP, Economic Development Department, I am talking about the previous administration there, which was Bob Johnson and Brian McGreen. And when I'm talking about code compliance, I'm talking about the manager who has retired, and that's Scott Sanford. I have been working on neighborhood issues and code compliance issues for 35 years. During that 35 years, we have passed ordinances that dealt with drug and prostitution and houses and closing them down. We worked with Don Martin to close down blind pigs. We picketed in front of landlords' homes, not the houses that were tagged and causing problems because the neighborhood knew who those were. We went out to the landlord's properties so that their neighbors understood the type of person that owned property in the city of Lansing. We went before the legislature. When the legislature wanted to change code compliance and have it from five to seven years for inspections, and we cried loudly from the rafters, letting them know that that was not something that was acceptable for us in our community. What could happen in five to seven years made a huge impact on neighborhoods. We adopted the IPMC, both with building as well as fire, electrical, and plumbing. 2018, we also passed an ordinance adding to the IPMC that required landlords, in order to get their certification, to have paid their property taxes, or they would not receive their certification. When I look at the failures that have happened, there were ordinances that were passed that were never fulfilled by the people that were in charge, that were supposed to make sure that those things happened. We had a culture that precipitated in code compliance to the point that during an election, the code manager stated in a meeting with his staff that we have another idiot running for counsel. When this became aware to both then-President Hussein and myself, we felt it was extremely important that this be turned over to the city attorney's office, who turned it over to HR. When the person that was running, Ryan Cost, was elected, we went to the administration and insisted that that investigation be done by January 1st, so that when Ryan took office, that this would be behind him. That investigation wasn't done until February. When we put together the committees, we appointed Ryan to both the Public Safety Committee and City Operations. At that time, in talking with Vice President Garza, we made it clear to the administration that Scott Sanford would not be allowed to represent code compliance before counsel. Why did we make that decision? We made that decision because of the disrespect and how he was conducting himself. It was evident to us that that was not the type of response that we wanted before us in counsel. An investigation was held, and after the investigation, there were findings were given to then the new department interim director, Bart Kimmel, who then proceeded to deal with the situation. We were asked by the administration to bring Mr. Sanford back. And yes, I did say that if Scott Sanford was forced to come back to counsel, that I, as president, would cancel every public safety meeting as long as he was back there. The reason, again, was because of the blatant disrespect for this body. After consulting with the city attorney, we found out that his job description only indicated that he needed to give us reports. I reached out to both the Chair of City Operations and the Chair of Public Safety, who both indicated that they did not want that individual in their committees. Tonight, as we listen to the constituents who come forward with their concerns, my goal for this council is to be looking at ways that we can solve the problem, meaningful ways that we can solve the problem. I know since this issue has been taken up by Ms. Kimmel and Shelby Frayer, that they have worked diligently to try to come up with some solutions. Based on that, we need to be looking, as we do our questioning, on not necessarily putting blame, but how do we solve the problem? There has to be short-term, medium, and long-term resolutions to this. We cannot, and I stress this, we cannot keep going backwards. We can't have, such as Arbor Point, who, when we boarded up that apartment complex because of all the issues that were there, to end up being another Autumn Ridge. These are not acceptable to us as counsel, to the citizens of this city, to the people that are desperately looking for housing. We have to make sure that the housing that they're going into are ones that are safe, clean, and can be, and they can feel that it's someplace that they can call home. The idea that we have people that are living with cockroaches, bedbugs, rats, ceilings that are falling in on them, plumbing that they cannot use, is unacceptable. So at this point, we will open this up for those in the audience that have comments. And if you would give us your name at the podium, and you will have three minutes. Is there anyone that would like to address the council at this point?
Good evening. Mike Lynn. First, I want to address a couple real quick issues. I noticed that you guys named this the red-tag crisis. And crisis, as I was watching 60 Minutes last night, and Alejandro Mayorkas talked about why he wouldn't name the issues at the border a crisis, and he said, because we have a plan. So as long as we're working through our plan, we don't call it a crisis. Crisis is us waving our hands and running away from the situation. So that means we are in crisis. I imagine, I believe, we pretty much are. So that's the true definition of what we're into. You talked about short-term, midterm, and long-term plan. What we're finding in this situation, and what you all are seeing, and I appreciate you, Carol, for admitting that, and that's the first point of accountability I've heard from the city government in this city, is that we're at fault. We voted on things, we appropriated budgets, and this is what we've come up with. You said that you guys have made ordinance and doing all these things, and I know that that to be true. And then it's not being followed by the administration. And unfortunately, code compliance is under administration, all their employees are. So if things are not being done by way of this sketch here that kind of shows the direction on things go, you have to go up there. And I find it really disheartening that Scott Sanford is being thrown under the bus. And I'm not saying it's bad. He deserves everything that he's getting, but nobody's talking any higher than him, which is beyond me. I mean, even as we're taking blame and we're saying that administration, and then you named yourself specifically in the council, and then we named all these other people from all these other directions, we didn't name Andy Shore. And if people continuously think that I have some personal vendetta, but I don't. I just understand government. I understand how a strong mayor is supposed to move. I understand that he is the CEO of the city, and everything that works on the outside of this building, he is the boss of. So if it's not working, and we got all these different departments that have all these different problems, and we're not naming that as an issue in itself as accountability, we don't get to this point over one year, two years, three years. We probably don't get to this point over five or six years. But it's just, it's not addressing the issue as it applies. Meaning, if Scott Sanford was so terrible as we're saying that he is today, where was the meetings? Where was the conversations? Where was the accountability? Drag him in here and put him under oath and ask, why is this stuff going the way it's going? Because these aren't new. These red-tag situations aren't new. 2019, we were having the same exact discussion with the mayor. That's when Autumn Ridge popped up. And here we are again today, and Scott Sanford has left, and it's like, there's still no accountability to the people that allowed that behavior. As a supervisor, as a manager, if I allow somebody under me to do that type of derelict duty, it's on me ultimately. They're not going to go to the underperson. If a firefighter does something terrible, they're going to come to the chief if they just continue allowing that to happen. The chief is our mayor. You all can only make ordinance and send it through. I just want to say real quickly, outside of that, that's your short-term plan. Long-term plan is the wholesome accountability there. HRCS, I see they're all here. I would love for you to hear from you all on what we're doing with their charge. Their charge got changed by a city attorney opinion. I brought that paperwork to you all. I'd really love to know, because this is not the time to take a charge away from a body that's a stopgap, especially with this administration. Thank you.
Good evening. Farhan Sheikhumar. It's no secret that many families and neighborhoods are hurting. And this body, and the mayor's office, and the city attorney's office have decided to choose cruelty over compassion, harm over housing, profit over people, and backroom deals over transparency. The truth is, we come here every meeting telling you guys the problems that are facing this community, and you guys do not listen. It got as bad as where a toddler died in this city. A toddler died in this city, and that didn't even move you guys. No changes were made. Nobody was held accountable. So this conversation that we're having is long overdue. That toddler, that tragedy, could have been prevented. We're having the same conversation over and over and over again. Long-term, short-term, medium-term? We should have had those plans in place a long time ago. Because the problems that we're dealing with today didn't just happen overnight. It's been going on for years, and you guys have neglected us. As residents, you guys have neglected us. It doesn't matter, when people say they want change, they don't mean faces. We could have new city council members. People want change. People want policies, structural change, real change. That's not what we've been seeing here. It's a shame. It's a shame that things have gotten as bad as it has, because all of this could have been prevented, had the city council worked with the residents, as the mayor worked with the residents. If everybody had worked together, a lot of this could have been prevented. Look at this list. These are all the red-tag properties in this city. Look at it. That's a lot of houses. And that means, even if we hold these landlords accountable, then many people are going to be kicked out. What's the plan for that? Huh? Where are you guys going to put these people? We should have been had a trust fund where money was going towards, for situations like this, emergency situations like this. It's sad. You know, I was born in a third-world country. I was born in a refugee camp. And Lansing residents are being treated as third-world citizens. Literally. We got to do better. We have to do better. No more talking. We want to see action. We want policies being changed and implemented. Lives are at stake. Wake up.
So I just want to start off by saying something that I think that we should all know. The oversight of any code compliance office absolutely is the duty of the mayor, his administration, and any city government, period. City governments, especially one like ours, which we all know is a literal strong mayor government, acts very much as you would a company that has a CEO, the CEO of the city. So when you have an office in which a Scott Sanford is allowed to exist and continue to exist consistently in the ways that create what we now have on our hands as a crisis, do we all just act as if he acted in a silo? He did not, and we know that this isn't something that happens overnight. So I just wanted to kind of point out, with the mayor and the administration, they do the hiring, they do the firing, they do the enforcements. They're supposed to oversee the actual effectiveness of any person in their roles as a city government employee. That clearly did not happen, and that did not happen for an extremely long time. So any person, such as Mr. Sanford, who is the person that's in the hot seat right now, is supposed to have oversight. So when code compliance as an entity, as an office, is not doing their job, the responsibility ultimately falls on the mayor and his administration. The last time I was here, I said it was about time that he has to sit in that seat and answer some questions. We have yet to see that. We have an opportunity right now for us to not allow another hire that is a friend, or a favor, or another coercion of power, to be put in a position in which we don't have a capable person that has zero oversight, in which something like this, their ineffectiveness at their job results in a crisis. Their ineffectiveness at their job in HR results in lawsuit after lawsuit after lawsuit. Their ineffectiveness at their job results in us having a housing crisis, in which the mayor just stated on record to the news, we don't have enough affordable housing to even place them. These are issues that do not happen overnight. So yes, do you all share some accountability? Absolutely. Do slum lords? Absolutely. But who has the power to hire, to fire, to conduct the oversight, to enforce policies, to divert resources? We know exactly who has that responsibility. It's time to hold that person and their administration accountable for once.
Good evening. My name is Rosalyn Williams, and I've been at this podium multiple times. So first, thank you all for at least listening to me. But the question was asked to me today, and I had to ponder it based on the email I received. What has the city done for you? What can the city do for you? Backtrack, I am one of the residents that lives in Autumn Ridge. Well, no, I don't, because my unit has been red-tagged since February 24th. No heat, no gas, everything, because they're not up to code. We've been living like that since 2019. So when asked, what could the city do for me, they asked me, had HRC reached out to me? Yes, they have. But I think they thought that I was someone that's on Section 8. I work a full-time job, have a couple of businesses, so I make my own money. Unfortunately, HRC tried to make me feel stupid. Well, did you try Zillow? Did you do this? Did you do that? We are not in a position to be treating people like they're stupid, because everybody should know their rights. And if they don't, we should be in a position to teach. As far as solutions are concerned, I've been asking for this list for a while now, because I said, you know, I would do the research to find out what the code is, what they need done. I would help the city on my time to help bring this up to code. Hey, creating letters to say, we'll give you this if you're willing to give the city this, and in return, maybe even allow somebody to purchase this home if they're willing to equal it out. So that is a goal. You know, I know that Pontiac, Jackson, even as recent as Detroit is taking money out of their budgets to create affordable housing or create first-time home buyers. So there are a lot of things that we can do, but we keep hitting the, oh, well, we can't do that, the government says this, the government says that. Well, as it stands right now, K-North had about 24 families displaced. We already know Homes Road, 26 families displaced. Technically, there's thousands of families in Autumn Ridge that should be displaced because we're pink-tagged or red-tagged. And as recent as, a few days ago, I found out the owner that owns Homes Road bought Ryestale or Stonecrest. So again, you're going to have more families that are at risk. What are we doing? We're steadily allowing these people to buy these properties, but putting people at risk. I mean, I don't know what else to say. I'm really, really discouraged. I'm angry. And then, I'm an elected official, where I have to sit and smile and say, it's okay, it's okay, when it's not okay. The good thing for me is I pray, I have a good support system, and I have friends that will help me. But everybody doesn't have this. And yes, the mayor should be here, because I've asked him for a meeting one-on-one. He looked at me, and just nothing. HRC needs to be reevaluated. Start cutting the budget. Cut the budget. I mean, don't keep asking for money if you can't prove anything. Shut it down. And that's where it needs to be revamped at this point. Let's just be honest. That's my say on all of this.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council?
Good evening. My name's Elaine Wambow. Thank you, President Wood, for making the statement before the meeting was opened up. I really appreciate that you are all coming together to look into the problem, work effectively, to try and change and correct the housing problems in Lansing. This is not a new problem. When I first founded Rejuvenating South Lansing in 2015, we had the same problems. We've been working on this and working on it. The housing problems in Lansing of over 705-plus-tagged properties or homes is a disgrace, not to mention the poor, insecure, I can't even imagine what is going on with the people living in those apartments. They've been paying rent. The property owners and management has been taking that money. Some of these people, and I've talked to some of them, they have children. They're afraid to say anything, because they're working jobs, trying to get them to school, trying to keep them in an environment where at least there's a roof over their head. They're helpless, because nobody's been listening to them. The time is now to make the property owners and the managements accountable for their neglect and not correcting the red-tag issues that have been in front of them. The time is now to take aggressive measures to correct these problems. We are taxpayers. All the money that you're going to pay out to pay for the hotels and all the other things, it's our money. We support this entire city. We want actions. We've been demanding actions. Stick together now as a council and hold the mayor accountable. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council?
Jody Washington. Excuse me. Carol, thank you so much for holding this special meeting. And thank you, counsel, for really trying to get some teeth in this problem. This did not happen overnight. It's been going on for years, and it's gotten only worse the last four to five years. I am horrified with all of the complaints that we gave to Andy Shore regarding Scott Sanford, that the answer to what he was not doing was to give him a promotion. That is unconscionable. I have had several meetings with Andy Shore, always only to hear, we're going to agree to disagree, and, thank you very much, with nothing. I'm horrified that the HRCS department, unilaterally, through an opinion from the city attorney, stripped away all duties of the HRCS Advisory Board that is in ordinance. I didn't know that the director could go to the city attorney and just change an ordinance and have it take effect immediately. So there you have another group of eyes that have been blinded without their consent. I also would say, having sat on that board, the duties included actually reaching out to people investigating. I was chastised for actually doing that. And I was told by the mayor, well, you're nothing but an advisory board. Thank you. I think with stripping everybody from their responsibilities, from their voice, to not following ordinances, we have created a crisis. I'm in these apartment buildings. I work with homeless people every single day. And I will tell you, because of this, and because our HRCS department abdicates everything to an outside agency, who now is putting these people into hotels, our homeless people that were in there are being asked to leave. So we now have several more people on the streets. And as far as affordable housing, somebody needs to go to the state and get exclusionary zoning outlawed. The reason we don't have enough affordable housing is because Lansing cannot do all of the affordable housing. We can't afford it, we can't sustain it. But every outside township has practiced exclusionary zoning, so they don't have to take those people. To me, that is nothing more than systemic racism that perpetuates generational poverty. So do what you got to do. Use your legislative power. Use what you have. You have the budget. You have the law. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council at this time?
Thank you, counsel, for having this special meeting. Thank you, Carol, for being open and honest, as always. I am appalled at the number of red-tagged houses that we have and the properties that are out there. Some of you know that during Christmas, I was dealing with a situation with a family of six. A family of six, and I own my home, and I have enough bedrooms, so don't come after me, that I moved them into my home. Because I had a great-granddaughter cry because she thought Santa Claus wasn't going to know where she was living. And I watched what took place in that apartment complex. And to this day, there's still two families living there. complex. And to this day, there's still two families living there that never moved out. And shame on whoever, for all these apartment buildings to be having individuals paying rent. They're still paying out the money. And I've said it, and I've said it over again. Ryan has heard me say it so many times, I'm a broken record. They are making a living on human lives, and nothing is being done. And when you have an administration who says, "Well, I believe in my department heads and I stand by them," where? You allowed this to go on for years. It didn't happen overnight. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council at this time?
Belinda Fitzpatrick, 224 South Home Street and Post Office back some 20204. Yeah, my house is on this list. And my house was red-tagged. And I think it was inappropriately red-tagged. And I think that this is a city and a county issue. I'm looking forward to this case law in front of the Supreme Court of the United States about returning the surplus proceeds to the last property owner. Now, Alan Facks referred to this as putting, returning the money in front of doing something about blight. But I've seen the red tag misused from the other perspective. And I, you know, I think there's a problem with having an individual who works for the county, who on Facebook has publicly said that they're managing 30 rental properties. And then, I've heard that he bought 10 acres in an expensive area, and then he has two Teslas. Now, you know, I kind of suspect, in my case, that there was a connection between somebody wanting to push my house into tax foreclosure and my house getting red-tagged. Now, the one house I own outright, but the one that has a mortgage, the mortgage company has already started adding the $150 a month to my mortgage. But luckily for me, I decided to live below my means, and I can fight having my house pushed into tax foreclosure. But I think this really needs to be investigated. I told Ryan Cuss, "This is not just a city issue. This is a county issue." Because if I end up suing, it's going to be against the county and against the City of Lansing under joint and several liability, because Animal Control brought in code compliance. Animal Control used a warrant that was, contained very many perjurious statements. And before my house was searched, code compliance should have went in and got another warrant. So, I mean, I can appreciate the people who are renters, but, um, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council at this time? Hsenee Kate?
Reverend Dr. Thomas Woods, part of the HRCS Advisory Board. I'm really concerned about some of the things I've heard tonight. This problem has really been an issue with this city for a long time. I'm a housing administrator by trade. I've had to deal with situations like this since 1989, when we had problems with dilapidated housing, landlords not being able to keep up the units that they move people into, et cetera, et cetera. And now we're having issues with code compliance possibly not doing what they're supposed to be doing. So we have to ask the question, "Why is all of this going on? How is it that we got into this situation?" And these are questions that we really, truly need to answer if we're going to be able to at least put a dent in these problems that we're having. This is a great city. I love this city. I'm very proud of this city. I was born in this city. And I want people to know that when they come here, that Lansing takes care of its own. That means we're going to be able to provide decent, clean, affordable housing, but we need to have proper oversight. Where did we lose that? What happened? I hear a lot of people talk about what we need to do, okay? And one way may not be better than the other, but one thing I know for sure, in terms of dealing with issues, we got to be able to come together, and we have to be able to listen to one another, and we got to formulate a plan which to attack this problem and stick with it. This is not the first time that I've come to a meeting and heard people talk about their issues with dilapidated housing problems in Lansing, et cetera, et cetera. We talk about it. Everyone gets all jacked up, and, hey, we're going to do something, and then they forget about it. Everyone goes back to their own lives, something like that. But who winds up losing? The individuals who are in those dilapidated housing. We have to come up with a plan. We need to do something to move this forward, because we have too many groups that are being blamed. The mayor's being blamed, HRCS is being blamed, code compliance is being blamed. Okay, fine. What can we do in order to move this forward, okay? And I'm asking, I'm begging you. And I'll do anything that I can to help move this forward. Just tell me what I need to do. But we need to have a plan. Please, help us come up with a plan, and let's stick with it. The mayor needs to be involved, and I kind of wish he was here, in order to hear some of these issues. Because these are some valid concerns. There are some that I didn't point so valid, but that's their opinion. But these are some valid concerns. We do have issues with housing in this city. Let's attack it, and let's attack it consistently.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council at this time?
I would just like to reiterate that when people come to the dais and talk to us about those issues, even though we might not be responding to you, we have all reached out to different people in different departments and to the administration to try to come up with solutions, and have been told that items were being worked on. I also want to indicate that we had expected that there would be a representative from the mayor's office here this evening, and I had assumed that it would be Jane, who is not here from the mayor's office. We do have other department heads here, but we had assumed that someone from his administration would be here to speak on his behalf as well. At this time, if we could have the members of EDP and HRCS come up and take seats at the table. We have additional seats for... Thank you. Yes, Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President. I'll be brief, and I appreciate your words in the beginning. I just want to also mention that we also had an Ad-Hoc Committee on Housing and Resident Safety last year, and put forth several recommendations as well. And again, as the chair of that committee, I do accept the responsibility that I never followed up on those. But those, you know, that is how council speaks, is through, you know, recommendations and resolutions. And so we did look at this problem and try to find resolutions, had a number of folks come in for public comment, had the departments in, and ultimately put forth, we thought were appropriate resolutions. Some required budget issues, and some required just department policies and procedures. And so that was just another tool that council used to try to look at the situation and provide recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, what we'd like to do is start going through the questions that were provided to you by council members. If there is follow-up on those, those are in your packets. The first one that we have is, what is the process in which property is inspected, flagged, and eventually tagged?
Good evening. You guys hear me okay?
Yep.
Thanks for having us. I do want to say thanks to the group for getting this organized, and we appreciate that this conversation is really going to be proactive. I liked when you guys said work session and coming up with solutions. I do believe not one department is going to fix this issue on our own, and it takes all of us. So I appreciate you guys holding this session, and we'll turn it over. We kind of have a few of us set to speak to each one of these questions. So if there's any, please stop us if you guys need clarification, or we can provide any other information. But we'll get started here.
Hi, I'm Barb Kimmel with the Development Office.
Can you pull that just a little bit closer, Barb?
I sure can.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Barb Kimmel. So how does a property become red-tagged? A property could be red-tagged for a variety of reasons. But typically, a red tag is provided to a property because it is unsafe for occupancy. It has been deemed unsafe for occupancy. And there's a few criteria that...
Barb, I'm going to interrupt you.
Sure.
If it says, "What is the process in which property is inspected?"
Inspected, flagged.
So let's go first with inspected.
Sure.
And then flagged, which would be issues that have come up with it, and then eventually tagged.
Sure, okay. So there's a couple of different routes for inspection. One would be for a rental certificate on the regular schedule for applying and receiving a rental certificate. So if it's time for your unit to be recertified and you pay your fee, then an inspector will come out and walk through your property, and it's possible that they'll find violations, basically a list of repairs that need to be made, so that the unit is brought up to the housing code. And after 30 days, there will be a recheck. And if those items are not taken care of, then a lack of certificate or non-compliance would be sent. And then typically, it could be tagged for being out of compliance. Also, there is another process, the safety process. In other words, if code compliance receives a complaint, either from an occupant or for a neighbor about unsafe conditions, and then they could do an inspection to take a look and see what violations exist. And then, they would write up those violations. And if those violations were not taken care of, then there's a whole process for that. But generally, a red tag would not be applied unless the property is unsafe, or if it was, if it failed to comply for a longer period of time, then it might be tagged as unsafe or tagged as red.
A couple of questions, and then I'll take council members. But the inspection process, you said, "When a fee is paid, what is the average time?" I can remember when it was almost a year before an inspection would be done, from the time that the fee was paid. What is the turnaround time currently?
So I'm not exactly sure what the average turnaround time is, but today I looked at one, and it was six months.
Six months, okay. And then, if a property is pink-tagged, because there were issues that we're not complied with, is there any follow-up? If there's a tenant in it, is there any follow-up if that tenant leaves, or to make sure that, because then it would be red-tagged, if I'm not mistaken, if the tenant is no longer in there, then it becomes red-tagged and you can't rent it? Is that correct?
Yes, I believe that is correct.
Okay. Is there any follow-up to make sure that the current tenant is still there, and it's not a matter of bouncing tenants in and out?
I'm not, to be honest with you, I don't think at this point that there is, just at that point, other than looking at the extensions, you know? So 30 days is the same tenant there, you know? Like, for a recheck, if you're going out for a recheck, is the same tenant there, or is it vacant? Or maybe even, is the inspector going to recognize that tenant as the same tenant or a different tenant? Because we don't get tenant information.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President. Thanks, Barb. Thanks, Shelby. Thanks, Director Coleman. Thanks, Joan, for being here. I appreciate it. Question. So you said, you talked about the process of properties inspected, flagged, or individually tagged. My question is this. So you have a home, and it's pink-tagged. You go and you do the inspection, it's pink-tagged. What is the average time that a follow-up inspection is conducted to make sure that that landlord is doing what they need to do?
I can't answer that right now. I don't know. I'm not quite sure how to query the system to find that out.
Okay, so is there, thank you for that. So is there a, there's not a process by which, you know, the pink tag is entered into the system, and then it automatically kicks out a follow-up date for reinspection?
I think that it does kick out a follow-up date of 30 days.
But you don't know if that's done consistently?
I think it is. But is the inspection done?
That's what I mean.
Right.
Yeah, okay, all right. One of the things that we had suggested in the Ad-Hoc Committee on Housing and Resident Safety was a review of the rental inspection, of the rental fees, the rental license fees, to make sure, one, they're current with, at the time, 2023, but that they're appropriate to be able to hire the necessary staff and/or just conduct the services that we need to do to make sure, you know, that we're doing the necessary follow-up. Do you know if that's happened, or if that's in the plans?
It is in process, yes. We have, I have written the RFP, and we are getting ready to send it out. It will go to purchasing, and it'll be posted.
Thank you, Barb. So you've just, you guys have just recently done that, then just started the, and that's fine. I'm just wondering, you've just started the process. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Hsenee.
Sure. And trying to be solution-oriented. I'm thinking about capacity within code. We have, we have noticed this is an issue twice in time. And I think culpability in terms of council is that this type of meeting collectively has not happened earlier. I think respectively, we've all advocated, I think a bunch of times we've advocated, you know, obviously, we've done a number of amendments to ordinance and things like that. We listened to recommendations from the administration.
I think they want you to turn them off.
Sorry. We've implemented those recommendations. But this meeting absolutely should have happened quite some time ago. We know that. But again, trying to be solution-oriented. When it comes to code, in my time, over the past eight years, we have built capacity within code from seven code officers to 11 districts. We've built capacity within premise inspection, two and a half to four. We even created a position, a funded position, for a commercial corridor inspector, because what we are hearing from our code officers that were on the front lines is that we are being pulled out to essentially enforce code with regards to commercial properties, and that's taking us away from doing inspections, particularly when you're talking about multifamily dwellings. My question to you is, again, we are now at 11, four, and one, when we were just eight years ago at seven, two and a half, and zero. Based on what we are receiving annually, and I know you guys are studying all of this right now, what, when you think of 55,000 units, and 50% of those are rentals at this point, do we have enough code officers in place? Do revenues, annual revenues, as an example, actually support this idea of maybe even enhancing beyond the 11, particularly when you think of what our code office actually has to enforce, which is above and beyond what other municipalities such as Grand Rapids have to enforce? We know that. So are you guys, I mean, are we looking at that in terms of the capacity of code, and whether or not we have appropriate numbers within code?
What I can say is that we are looking, right now, we're having a problem, because we can't really use the BSNA system to assess where we're at, because we don't understand how to query it. And I did meet with one of the BSNA owners this afternoon and spent several hours with him, and that really helped my skills. But we... But we are still assessing some of the problems. We have a lot of inspections that are incomplete. We have a lot of properties that are out of compliance. We don't know the full extent of everything at this moment.
Okay.
So when we get to recommendations, there will be some recommendations.
Let me ask you this as well.
Sure.
So I'm thinking too, you guys obviously are going over the procedures, you're going over the policies. First of all, I want to know, and I don't want to get too far into additional questions, but I don't think I saw this on there. You guys are going over a policy review right now. Could you please tell me what that looks like? And what I mean, do we have internal people looking at that right now? As an example, our interim code compliance manager. Are we bringing in a contract employee to review those with that individual? Or are we going to actually bring somebody in that we deem qualified, right, to run this incredibly important job? And then actually allow them to review these policies and to give recommendations? What does that look like?
Right.
Because so much, it's difficult to even talk about capacity, I know that, when we have probably some flawed policies and procedures in place. And so at this point, that could potentially be throwing good money after bad, right?
So it will be one of our recommendations that we bring in a consultant to take a look at the department from the top down and from the bottom up to figure out where our strengths are, where our weaknesses are, where we need assistance, where we need to put our energy in order to catch up. We'll be making those recommendations.
Okay, and then the last question pertaining to this. When we red-tag a unit, I think I kind of heard this question in there, but not explicitly. When we red-tag a unit, if we are displacing somebody because of that, what are we doing, particularly, you know, obviously we saw what happened with the Semtob case? What are we doing to ensure that the units that these people are moving into? Because a lot of times what happens is an owner is just simply moving into some other unit within their portfolio. What are we doing as a city to ensure that those properties they're moving them into are not tagged?
Right. So we're learning. I'm learning. Shelby's learning. Everybody's learning. One of the things that we learned was that we actually need to ensure that these people are moving into properties. If a landlord is going to relocate people, and we're going to allow that to happen, we need to ensure that the unit that they're moving people into is safe, that it's not red-tagged, that it's not pink-tagged, that it's available for occupancy. So we will be implementing a process by which that will happen. So that if we end up vacating a building like we did at 2222 West Holmes, those folks will first go into a hotel. And then we will work with the, if the landlord is rehoming people, we will review those units and make sure that they're not, that they're safe for occupancy.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President. So, you know, I mentioned this last week about working in silos, right? So I get, you know, and maybe we'll get, it's probably on one of these questions, but I'm trying, I'm still trying to figure out, you know, we have an inspection, you have a pink-tagged property. Theoretically, we're supposed to come back within 30 days. I get that. So within that time, it's pink-tagged. To the reinspection, theoretically, 30 days. You have 30 days of uncertainty for that resident because they don't know what the heck that pink tag means.
Right.
Right? When the whole thing happened with Autumn Ridge and they were pink-tagged initially, I know I got calls, and I'm sure everybody else did, because the landlord was telling them that they were going to be evicted. So what are we doing by way of education? And by the way, that was one of our recommendations for last year, that when that person, when that pink tag happens, how do we, you know, what are we doing to provide some comfort to that resident, educate that resident of what their rights are so that they are not feeling that they're going to be evicted within the next 30 days?
Right. So when I took over, one of the things that we implemented was that whenever a unit is pink-tagged or red-tagged, we provide certain information. The first piece of information is this flyer called Know Your Housing Rights. And this flyer has contact information for legal aid and HRCS. And it talks about what you can do as a tenant to protect yourself, how you can stop paying rent and escrow your funds in an account if that is something that you feel that you might have to do. So we give them that, and then...
And I want to be, I want to be clear, Barb.
Sure.
That's something that your department has developed? Your department has done that?
Has...
Has developed that flyer, that informational piece?
We didn't develop the flyer, no. We didn't develop the flyer. HRCS actually developed the flyer. We worked with HRCS and the city attorney to put the flyer together and make sure that it contained correct information.
Okay.
Yep. And then we have two other HRCS-developed flyers, you're welcome, that we also give out. One is a Community Resource Guide, and the other one is a two-sided brochure called No Place to Go that has information about community resources like meals, overnight shelters, legal assistance, picture identification, things like that.
And those are just been, and so that's the process going forward?
Yes.
That you will be doing that?
We are doing it.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, we are doing it. Yep, officers have these.
Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, President Wood. I want to thank you all for being here. The flyers that you were just referring to, when did this process start? Where the education is being provided?
I'm trying to, it was shortly after I took over, after Brian McGrane left, maybe a week after.
So very recently.
It was recent.
Okay. With all of the red and pink tags, is that something that we're mailing out to everybody? Or having as far as a link or something for all of the people that's been in this condition for quite some time?
No, we haven't done that. I'm, that is, that is something that we could do. We could put it on our website. It might be on HRCS's website, as a matter of fact.
Okay.
Is it on HRCS's website? Okay, great.
Direct to the individuals that are being affected, since we have their addresses?
We certainly could.
Okay. Thank you. And then also, the BSNA software, is that the correct?
Yes.
You said you guys are working through that because you really don't know how to query. In other words, how to look at the data to follow through with the processes that are in place and the ordinances? You're saying we really don't know how that works at this point?
Yes, so we're trying really hard. We have training scheduled for staff, both staff that are users of the system and staff that are administrative users of the system that have more rights, rights to query, right to run reports, rights to see into the database and see the tables. Unfortunately, the earliest that we could schedule that training for was the end of April, April 25th, April 28th, and May 5th. And so we've loudly protested and got a little bit of attention today. One of the former owners came in and spent some time with me, showing me how to query, helping me learn how to operate the tables. And we also discovered, just in that short period of time, that we have some inconsistent data we're going to have to sift through and figure out.
So if, so how long have we had the software for?
I mean, I think it's been a long time. I feel like we've probably had this software for 20 years.
And nobody knows how to use it? And so now everyone has to be trained? But in the meantime, it sounds like we're not able to really move forward effectively with looking at the red tags and the pink tags and the process. So is there immediate, like I know they came and trained you, but is there immediate where we need these reports? Can the owner company run these reports so we're able to, as a city, start addressing these?
It's a possibility, yes.
Have that been in talk now, or is this just we're waiting until the training and then...
Oh, no, 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 no. We definitely don't want to wait. We want to get the information. The last several weeks have been extremely frustrating for me because I have not been able to crack this and haven't been able to get the assistance that I needed. So I was really happy today when we finally got some attention and were able to get in.
Well, hopefully, we're able to cross-train as we go forward. Thank you, Council President.
That, I think, is something that I want to say, that cross-training and succession planning are going to be at the top of the list in all of EDP.
That was one of the things I was going to hit on, and I was going to recommend to Jane, who has joined us at this point, that it doesn't matter what software we have in any department, there needs to make sure that everyone understands how to utilize that software so we're not in this position. The other thing that you might think about, Shelby and Barb, is we're looking at putting a million dollars into BSNA for finance. You might want to dangle that over their heads if they don't want to make sure that they're getting training to you in a sufficient amount of time.
Appreciate that, and I'll sure use it.
I would think so. The next question is, is there a written checklist that is published so that it shows what you are checking for or inspecting as for code?
So at this time, when a code inspector goes out, he takes notes, and then he comes back to the office and creates a letter. I will tell you that we have been working to develop a checklist, and that checklist is almost completed, and we will be implementing that very soon. The checklist has actually been in the works, I found out, since 2020.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President. So, and I'm sorry if it sounds like I'm asking the same question, Barb. I'm just trying to learn too. But so there is not, so the inspector goes out, he does the inspection, he writes notes. There is not a requirement for a written report to be filed about that inspection? I mean, what happens after he comes back to the office?
He comes back to the office and he utilizes the software, the BSNA software to, basically, it's kind of like a pick list. He'll, they will pick the violations, place those violations in a letter, and then the letter gets mailed to the owner and the tenant. And the letter says, "These are the violations that you have to fix, and this is how long you have to do so." But there's no actual record of the inspection, what was looked at, what wasn't looked at.
Pictures or anything like photographs and stuff? Okay, thank you.
There are some photographs, sometimes we see photos.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Next is, is there any tracking of... Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Hussein.
One, that's scary. So I'm glad you guys are looking at it. I mean, I'm appalled, frankly. A couple of things. When I actually first read that question, I thought, and I'm not seeing it anywhere else, so I'm going to go ahead and ask the question. I thought we were actually talking about, because I would have never imagined that such a checklist didn't exist. I thought we were actually talking about red-tag monitoring fees.
Right.
And I actually thought we were talking about the discretion that some officers are able to show, or I should say, execute when they're actually out in field. When it comes to red-tag monitoring, just very quickly, because again, I don't see it here, what are we doing differently now? What are we going to do differently than what we've done in the past? Because in the past, Barb, as you know, we've taken a look at properties that, for whatever reason, have went months and months and months without any type of monitoring fee. Yet there's really been nothing done on that particular home. And so we really have, we have this, and potentially even appearance of impropriety, frankly, out there with favoritism and things like that, but that that monitoring fee has not actually been assessed. The other piece is, we know that there's still a cost to doing business. If any one of our NEAT team members is out doing that 360 piece, looking for further deterioration, looking to determine whether or not there's habitation, any of those types of things, that there's a cost for doing business. And the other piece is, a lot of times, it's the fee that moves the landlord in terms of actually doing something with that property. So what are we going to do differently? Because when we look at the data, we are like blown away with all of the discrepancies and all the disparities.
I agree. I agree 100%. So one of the things, one of the things that we're implementing is that properties that are red-tagged, that have, that are past the, in the NEAT team, properties that are in the NEAT team, will be assessed regardless of whether a permit has been pulled, and they will be assessed until the property is habitable. That's allowed, and that's what we're going to do. Now, sometimes there is a situation if there's a fire and insurance is involved. But those situations will be identified, and they'll be monitored by the code enforcement manager.
Okay, and then my only other question is, when we go out and we create, generate this list of things that need to be fixed, what rises? I have a huge issue with sign and return forms. I have a real, real big issue with that.
What did you say?
With sign and return forms. So essentially, yeah, so essentially, instead of going out and actually re-inspecting every aspect, we're taking a lot of times these landlords, we're taking them at their word. So what are we doing with that? What is the rationale behind that? It's a problem.
Well, I think, I think we see that it's a problem. First of all, life safety things should never be included on a sign and return letter. I think that we may find that we have the manpower to go out and do follow-up inspections and not rely on sign and returns, but then we might find that we do not. If we do not, then we'll be coming to you to make a determination as to what we want to do as a city. Do we, you know? So remember, we're still in the process of assessing what's going on in this department. If we find that we need to make changes, we're going to come to you and let you know. If we need to address those in a budget, then that's what we're going to do.
I have Councilmember Spatafor, and then Councilmember Koss.
Thanks, President Wood. Thanks, Barb, everyone for being here tonight. A question I have kind of relates to what Adam's talking about. We assess these properties, we have these fees. I said on the Operations Committee, we constantly assess fees to property owners that don't take care of the exterior of their home, and we do the work. Is there anything, maybe this is a Jim question to research for later, is there anything that stops us from putting in ordinance that we're going to take care of? Some of, I mean, some of these repairs and then bill the owners and put it on their tax bill? It seems that the solution to a lot of these problems is creating more unhoused residents, citizens of the city, and that's not a good solution either. So is there a way that the city can step in and force these, like, health and safety issues to be corrected beyond letters and fines that you're aware of?
I think the city attorney should discuss that. As far as us, the city going in and making the repairs to these homes, you know, we don't own these homes. I'm not sure, I mean, there's legal issues, there's liability issues, there's all kinds of issues. I'm going to defer to the city attorney.
And Jim, I can't answer the question tonight.
The question is, how do you enforce it? You know, we do that all the time. You go into the court, you ask the court to take jurisdiction over the case, and the court orders these things to be done. I mean, that's all against enforcement.
But there's no possibility of us contracting out work to get done?
Contracting it out?
I.e., like we do with trash rats?
You mean, we do the work?
Well, not necessarily you, but like someone on behalf of the city.
Wow. That would be novel. We could, we could, you mean, do it and leave the people in the houses? Is that what you're suggesting?
What I'm, what I'm talking about is, we get these issues that are sometimes ignored by the landlords, the folks that own the property, and then we create situations, like 711 of them, where Barb's just told us, and we've known this, that red-tag means it's unsafe for occupancy. Before it gets to that point, there's obviously some, some level of intervention that's needed and ignored by landlords. Is there a possibility that the city can do those repairs and bill the landlord like we would if they left piles of trash on the front lawn?
We would have to get permission to go on private property and do that. That's why I'm suggesting that it's not difficult for us to file an action in a circuit court or any court and actually get a remedy within a matter of weeks where that can be ordered. Now, I think we've done that also in the district court. And we can do that through the civil infraction process or a complaint warrant. We have enough tools to do those types of things. But going onto private property and fixing it will need some type of...
You'd need some court order.
Administrative search warrant or something along those lines, or a judge's order.
Thank you.
Well, and funding as well.
Absolutely, yeah. Thank you.
Yeah, funding.
Councilmember Koss, and then Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, President Wood. Jim, I thought that we discussed at Public Safety at some point about the International Property Code when it came to red tags, that we could go in as a city with a life safety issue after 72 hours and bring in our own contractors to fix the issue? But the problem was finding manpower to actually enforce that? Was, did I mishear that?
I don't believe I was at that Public Safety Committee to hear that, but if that's in the International Property Maintenance Code, we have to go to a court to get an administrative search warrant to be able to go onto the property to do that type of thing? If it's an emergency situation for life? Yes, we have all the remedies we need. We just need to get the facts.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Nope, sorry.
No, no, go ahead.
My next question is for Barb. Now, I know that I took a look at the list that we got... Now, I know that I took a look at the list that we got, and there's 21 prop, because we're talking about, someone had mentioned something about the red tag process, so 21 properties are over a decade old, one is from 2003. So, are we, do we have a team that we've assembled to address these super old red tags that are, are in this report?
We do not, at this time, have a team. We will be making that recommendation.
I also want to add too, that some of this data, as we mentioned, we're not putting a lot of, a lot of stock into it. I noticed there were potentially some duplicates and things on this list as well. So I think, you know, we need to prioritize this list once we know we can trust the data that we're, we're getting out of BSNA.
Well, the 2003 red tag, the red tag was there yesterday when I passed it, so that, that is actually real.
So it's still there?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. And clearly, someone's been living in that house the past 20 years. Just one last thing, a frustration here, you know, all of you have come here tonight to, to work with us and find solutions, everybody at city council's here, the mayor's chair is empty, and Jane, the deputy mayor, didn't show up until 6:10, and they're asking taxpayers for over a million dollars in pay in that office? I'm a little disappointed. We need to be all in this together.
Thank you. Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President. So, when we talk about what Councilmember Spatafor said, and, and we talked about this, you know, if we can go on someone's property, cut their grass, go on somebody's property, take their belongings, trash, whatever you call it, and then charge them four and $5,000, and when they can't pay, put that on their taxes, we had this discussion last year in our ad hoc committee, that, you know, what is to, and, and this is how we got to looking at rental fees and looking at inspection fees and whether or not they're sufficient. You know, we also, in the past, have had contractors on, a list of contractors, because we had this program where we would go in and, and repair people's homes. So we, we have contractors available. I, I'm still, I'm still questioning, you know, why we can't do what Councilmember Spatafor said, why, why, you know, because, because we're trespassing when we go on somebody's property when we cut their grass. You know, nobody's letting us go on their, their property to cut their grass, nobody's letting us go on their property to take their trash. As a matter of fact, a lot of people who come to government ops basically say some of the stuff that people took weren't trash. We've been in people's garages, because the garage door was open. So we've been in someone's living space. So I'm, I'm, you know, and I, I continue to talk about this, I, I continue to say that we, as a city, we should be able to do that, we should be able, and we should be able to, when these, if we get to the point where we're red tagging and someone has to leave their house, the landlord should be paying for it. And I know we've had discussions about it, but they're doing it in a lot of communities in the state of Michigan, and so I will once again put those as part of our budget priorities and recommendations to the administration, but I, I am interested, and, and, and Jim, you, you, you told us why that isn't the case in committee, so if you can talk to us right now and explain to us why we can't do, why we can't do the same thing we're doing with grass and trash, because we are entering people's property, I, I'd appreciate that, just so everybody can hear his response.
Well, you know, the weed and trash and all that, it's open and obvious, it certainly is on the personal property, but you have an ordinance also that says that it's a violation, it's a criminal violation or a civil infraction, and you're going to ameliorate an emergency situation, one that harms the public health, safety, and welfare. Going onto a property where you actually go into the house, into the curtilage, and, you know, hire contractors to work on property that's owned by someone else, I mean, you have, you have big constitutional issues there without a warrant. And so, we can always go and get a warrant, we can ask a warrant for a warrant from a judge, to protect the city, so we don't receive another lawsuit.
What, okay, please, please. What, what I'd recommend at, at this point is, this is something I think you can have a further discussion in public safety. No, no, that's not a problem, and that, that can be taken up there. Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, President Wood. Thank you so, so much, I'm, I'm very appreciative of the transparency, very appreciative of the transparency. And then, at the same time, as a result of that, it's very frightening to hear all of these different areas that did not get in the condition that they are overnight. So my question would be, what are we looking at? I've never been a part of an entity that someone didn't get written up, or, you know, fired or something for some of this. I mean, these are people's lives. So, so is, has anyone, what is, I guess, the process, administrative process? Do you have one as far as when people, to hold employees, management, everyone accountable? Because there's, I mean, this, this is eye-opening. Thank you.
Well, I think we do have processes to hold employees accountable, absolutely. You need to, to follow those policies and procedures, and you need to implement those policies and procedures. So you might start with an evaluation, and then you might follow that up with a, a PIP, an improvement program, or an improvement plan, you know, to help coach an employee along. You might follow that up with a counseling statement, you might follow that up with, with written reprimands. So what it, what it takes is, you have to follow the process, and you have to follow through on the process. It's quite time-consuming, but you have to make it a priority.
Wow, thank you. So that's, that's, oh, I'm sorry.
Finish your question.
Thank you, sorry about that, President. So have there been evaluations done over this time in what you guys are reviewing?
No. The, the city has not done evaluations, actual employee evaluations, in a very long time. I mean, gosh, it's probably been 15 years when they decided they really didn't want to do evaluations anymore, and I can't tell you why that is, but one of the recommendations that will be made would be to regularly evaluate code enforcement employees.
So no city employees have been evaluated in the last approximately 15 years, based on your account?
That's my knowledge.
Thank you so much. Thank you, President Wood.
You're welcome. I, I just want to let people know, we've only gotten through, I'm now on to the third question, so if we can make sure that the questions that we're asking relate to the question that we're dealing with, that, that would be helpful, and then if you would note your questions as we get down further, we can talk about those as well. Mayor Schor has joined us.
I just want to apologize for being late, I was in my office on a call, listening, so I've heard just about all of it, but I was on a call, but I thought I would join you when the call ended, and it did, so thank you for the opportunity.
All right, thank you. Is there?
I would also ask that, as these questions are being developed, do you be more specific with the questions? I know we had a discussion about being able to go on private property and all that, I'd like to get more clarification to the questions, and what was said at Public Safety, because I wasn't there, so.
Okay.
If that's possible.
Yep. Okay. Is there a tracking of the workload that code is doing?
What I said was that we're, we're working to learn how to query those types of things.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. And, and also to set up a system whereby the workload is monitored by the code compliance manager.
All right. The next question that we have is, a month ago, there was no long-term plan, is there now one in place, and what is it?
Okay, so I'm just going to point out that two weeks ago, we had a leadership change in code enforcement, and now we have an interim code enforcement manager who's been there about two weeks. His name is Walter Allen, he's been with the department for, I think, 23 years, and he is dedicated to making change. And so, we have, we have done the following. We've implemented the ordinance requiring that property taxes be paid prior to issuing a rental certificate. We've identified
And, and who's doing that? Is the code officer?
Yes.
Okay.
And we've identified and continue to identify policies and procedures that need to be implemented. We've identified training needs for BSNA that include setups for some of the queries that we're talking about for managing the department, and those include inspection completions and NEAT fee assessment, among many, many others. We've scheduled the training, as I said, for BSNA. We've reviewed the job description in preparation for posting the code enforcement manager position, because right now, we have an interim in that position. We have written the RFP for the fee study for EDP in preparation for posting by purchasing on MITN, and that will look at all fees of EDP, not just code enforcement. We're working to identify a contract worker or a consultant that can come in with expertise and evaluate the department, policies, procedures, and insist with, or assist with identifying all issues and make recommendations that we can adopt for solutions. We are also identifying the need for a structural change to the red tag and pink tag system. In my opinion, pink tagging is ineffective, as it keeps safe units oftentimes off of the market while contributing to the affordable housing crisis. So one of the things we'll be working with our consultant about is the practice of pink tagging unoccupied units when the, when the complex is not in compliance. That's meant to punish the landlord, but what happens is, they just move people in anyways. So we're going to take a look at that. I, I think there, you know, there are ways that we need to strengthen what we do without punishing the people that need housing.
Um, base, go ahead, will you finish?
I was just going to say, instead of a pink tag, a compliance ticket should be issued by the code enforcement officer. I think we also need to work with the courts and, you know, make sure that we can, that they're on board, and, and we need to enforce what we have.
With, with the items that you have listed, if you could put together that along with a timeline, as to how you, you know, this is something that we want to have accomplished in three months, this is something that we want, if, if you would do that. Councilmember Spitzley?
Oh, I'm not done. Can I finish my list?
Yeah, if you're not done, keep going.
I just don't want to miss anything important.
You got to roll.
So I think we also need to identify a strategy for lancing to keep and demolish blighted homes pre-tax foreclosure auction, instead of passing them on to the treasurer. Because what's happening is that we have some extremely blighted homes that are getting auctioned to people, and they're either staying red tagged because they are beyond repair, or they're being minimally rehabilitated and people are being allowed to live there, and it's not creating a good situation. So I think we need to take a look at that. And that's important. We also need to identify, or the need for monitoring code officers' productivity, we talked about that, and, and also possibly restructure their day, so that they're doing field inspections. Right now, they have three hours a day in the office. They may not need three hours a day to spend in the office. And then, one of the things that we need to do, well, I think that's pertinent, we need to identify and remove duplicate red tags, there's at least 45 duplicate red tags on the list that we gave you. And we need to leave the old enforcements and remove the new enforcements. So that's, those are our recommendations right now, and like I said, we want to bring in a consultant to, and that consultant will probably add more recommendations.
Okay, thank you. I have Councilmember Spitzley and Councilmember Garza.
Thank you, Madam President. So, Barb, you, you've said a lot that you'll be making recommendations, and you'll be doing that, so what is, what does that mean, when you say you're going to be making recommendations? Who are you making recommendations to? Are you going to come to counsel? I mean, who are you making recommendations to?
Right. So
I don't want to put words in your mouth.
So, so I think it depends on the recommendation. If it's something that we can implement, like policy and procedure, we're going to implement that. If it's something that requires an ordinance change, then we're going to come to you. If there's something that we need to do to strengthen our position in the courts, then we're going to meet with the courts. Yep, we're going to do what we need to do.
Thank you. Councilmember Garza.
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening, everyone, thanks for being here. Barb, when you mentioned working with the courts, and this may be to Mr. Shmerka, what are, what are we doing, or what can we do to make sure that another Autumn Ridge doesn't take place? I mean, because those were red tagged in 2019, they're suing the city, now we're in litigation, and nothing's being done, and, like, one of the constituents out there spoke on, that lived there and had to move out of there, I mean, our hands are tied regarding, you know, a lawsuit. So what can we do to work with the courts to make sure that, if we're starting to find these bad property owners, what are, what can we do to prevent them from suing us and putting us in courts for three years, and these people are still living in the bad situation there?
Yes, Mr. City Attorney.
Unfortunately, litigation, and there's, there's a lot to that question. A litigation takes time, there's no question about it. When you're talking about Autumn Ridge, the city was sued for racial discrimination, claiming that what, what the city was doing was a result of race discrimination, and that was filed in federal court. That process takes time, you know, you have to file motions, depositions, discovery, all that. There was a simultaneous action in the state court. So we had two lawsuits on there, and that doesn't stop us from inspecting and doing things. They were claiming that the properties didn't need repair, all that type of thing, it was just a discrimination action on the part of the city. We won the one in the federal court, and then the second one, the state court, was dismissed voluntarily. Reinspections were done, and I don't know how many, but we have a number that are now being appealed in the administrative process for Autumn Ridge, so that's where we are right now, and I think perhaps Barb can talk more specifically as to that. In this whole issue of red tags and housing, we have many remedies that are out there. We could write tickets, we can write complaints and warrants for misdemeanors, we could go into, we can do make safe and demolish process, we can go to the court like we're doing with this latest, the, the housing that, that we're doing right now, we can go and ask the court, the court can take jurisdiction. We've done it with other cases in the district court, I mean, the remedies are there, we just need to have the facts.
Yeah. Well, I appreciate that, but I mean, I guess what I'm asking is, you know, anybody can, could file a frivolous lawsuit, right, and, and drag their feet for years upon years, and these people are still living in these bad conditions. I'm asking, is there anything to do, anything we can do to prevent that from happening? Is there an ordinance we can put in place to make sure that, you know, something like this doesn't get dragged out for years upon years?
Well, you're right, anyone can go into court and make claims that something isn't right, like whether it's discriminatory practice or whatever, and it's going to go into the system with all of its rules of court, and it will take a year or two years sometimes to get through that, unless we go in, the city goes in under the court rules for temporary relief, things of that nature, we've done that in the district court, or there's nothing to prevent administrative process, make safe or demolish while we're in the court.
So it sounds like we have some tools in the toolbox that we can utilize.
Yeah.
All right. Councilmember Hussein.
But you have to be willing to take the tools out of the toolbox and apply them.
Yes.
What's very frustrating to me, Jim, is that, and, you know, since you brought up Semin, I, I cannot tell you how frustrated I am with that process, and, and I'm just using that as a microcosm of what's going on. I met out on that property with Brian McGrane twice, I met out on that property with the late Bishop Maxwell once, I implored last year in a Brown Bad meeting where it was just myself and the mayor year in a Brown Bad meeting where it was just myself and the mayor for the administration to pull in Semtav and, and apply every single tool that we had in the toolbox, because it wasn't just that property, but he was buying up properties all across the city and, and essentially leaving you-know-what in his wake, right? I mean, really, really horrid conditions. Every time we, every single time we bring these types of things to law or to the administration, or we hear, we got the tools. We got the tools.
Yep.
So why, so what's the issue? Why are we not applying them? Is it an issue that interdepartmentally folks aren't communicating? Is it an issue where maybe it's getting to law offices and you're too, you're too lenient? I'm going to be frank. What's going on at Sycamore Townhomes is absolutely disgusting. We talk about Autumn Ridge a lot, but what hap, let me give you an example. So back in, and I actually have a timeline here, and this is incredibly frustrating. So when we talk about Arbor Point, then it was Woodside, now it's Sycamore. I actually have a timeline here. And, and to me, this is just, I mean, this is egregiously bad.
I'm going to interrupt you, Councilmember Hussein. City TV, what we're getting on the screens here is our bios. I don't know whether the live feed is still working for everyone or not. Thank you.
So let me give you this timeline. So in May of 2022, we did an inspection on Sycamore, when in July, there was zero work that had been done. Zero. I know for a fact that code officers wanted to pink tag that property, and they, or, or write tickets, right? Court ordered compliance tickets. What happened instead was there was actually a meeting with law, and so then there was a meeting in, let's see. So there was actually a meeting in July, right? And there were all of these agreements that were, that were made, made. By December of 2022, not one of those agreements had been met. So our code officers, once again, and this, and this is the issue, is that we do have some good, I mean, incredibly good frontline workers that are trying to do really good things out in the field, and yet, for whatever reason, they're meeting resistance when they're trying to apply the tools, or they're trying to get the, the folks that are responsible for applying the tools to actually apply the tools. So in any event, when they go back in December, again, nothing's been done. And instead of allowing code to then go out there and to enforce the way that they can enforce, what happened was another meeting was established. That is an absolute example right there of us having the tools and us refusing to apply them. You were, several times.
We have to get the data and the requests to do that. We have the remedies. We do it all the time.
Who does the request need to come from? Is it the code officers? Is it, is it the director of EDP? Is it the compliance manager?
Depending on what it is, if it's a building safety issue or code, yes, from them. They need to come and ask us to do something about a particular piece of property. And we have the tools. And we have the remedy. We could write a misdemeanor. We could write a civil infraction. We could recommend that they start the process for make safe or demolish. We could do a nuisance action. I mean, we have these tools. There is nothing that we say that we can't do with these, these tools that we have.
So, so let me ask you then with Autumn Ridge-
We need to have this request.
Well, so I hope, because what I'm hearing is that we have all the tools, but that your office isn't getting necessarily what it needs. So I'm hoping that you all, as a city attorney's office, that you guys actually get out and you actually educate our departmental directors, you know, senior level management, in terms of what it is that you all need to actually get out there and to enforce the tools that we have on the books. When it comes to Autumn's Ridge, I am, I, I understand, the pink tags had to be removed. I, I know that there were, there were a series of inspections that occurred back in December. I know that this particular property owner is quite savvy. And so I know that, and this isn't necessarily typical, but a number of appeals were put forth before the building board review. I also know that that individual did not submit those in appropriate form, right? So that individual has some period of time now to put it in appropriate form, put it back before the building board review. I mean, it's an incredibly long process. That being said, in the meantime, at least as I understand it, none of those units are actually certified. Yet as early as, or recently as this afternoon, he was signing leases. So why are we not out prosecuting everyone?
We have raised this issue with others. We, we don't issue the rental certificates. Others have to issue them. And, and so we're aware that that is not happening.
But it's a violation of the law to be renting without a certificate.
Carol, we don't write warrants for assault, battery, or anything else unless the police give us the facts and ask us to do something. We need to have that come to us. That has not come to us. I've heard that, what you just said, Mr., Mr. Hussein, but nobody has requested that we do anything on that.
So, so what it sounds like, Jim, is that our office can work with your shop to figure out what specifics that you need for our code folks to be able to document the right report to get it to your shop. So that, that's something we can, we can set up.
Exactly.
Wait, did you want us, okay.
I'm just going to say that we got the information that we needed up to the OCA for 2222 West Homes. We did that in a timely manner, and we got good results. I think that the department has to be committed to holding landlords accountable.
Well, again, going, going back to the experience that, that I've had, and I'm sure Jim's going to tell me you can't do that today, but Mark Smith was a prime example of a landlord that was preying on, on people. We took him to court, ordered compliance, and when he didn't fulfill that, Judge Beverly Nettles-Nikerson ordered him to sell all of his properties. And he did it. Next is, how many employees are at code and define their different roles?
So currently, there's 21 code employees. We have a manager who's an interim. We have a lead housing manager. We have 10 code enforcement officers. Nine of those positions are filled and one is vacant. We have four premise officer positions. Three are occupied. One is now vacant. That, that gentleman just left last week. We have three principal clerks. And we have one administrative assistant that does billing and assists with make safe and demolish.
Councilmember Hussein.
So the nature of those roles, it bothers me a little bit for, I, I know we are down now to nine districts, and I think that's totally inappropriate, frankly. And so when we talk about solutions, again, we need to take a look at these districts, the number of dwellings in each one of these districts, and the fact that we decided to, as an example, take one of those districts, collapse it, and, and create a floater position for an individual that hasn't been, frankly, in the office for about a year now, makes zero sense to me. And then the other pieces, what we also did is we created more, the shop became more top-heavy. So instead of 11 districts, we now, my understanding is have nine. We have one floater. We created another position for, I don't know the exact term, but housing inspector. We put Walter Allen in that. And so you're continuing to take people out of the field, and you're, and continuing to increase the number of dwellings that these, that, that these code officers are, are responsible for. The other piece is, I don't know that there's, what's the word? Not equity, but I, I don't, I don't know that there's a balance between each district. As an example, you have code officers in South Lansing, where we have quite a bit, right? There's, there's quite, there's prevalence of multifamily housing, and there's quite a bit of density in terms of rental. And you have people operating in those districts, and then you have some that are north of 496, as an example. And the units, at least I believe, from what I, from what I can tell, the, the number of rental dwellings is not even close, right, to what that one maybe district officer is responsible for in South Lansing. So what I'd like to see, too, is us consider the number of districts, the number of dwellings that is appropriate for each code officer, and then making sure that the, the number of doors essentially they're responsible for is that there's some balance to that.
That can definitely be done.
Okay. Our next question is, do we track city cars to ensure that their safety and that, that these properties are inspected?
Sure. So vehicle maintenance is tracked by mileage, which is entered when the user fills up their gas tank. And when vehicles require maintenance, an email is sent to that individual who is assigned to the car. And if there's no response, then the supervisor of that employee is notified. And then for incidentals such as flat tires or service engine lights, the employee will email Fleet Services to schedule an appointment. Currently, there are no outstanding maintenance or service issues with code enforcement vehicles. I want to let you know that. I will let you know also that there are only about six EDP cars that have GPS installed. So we need to work with public service to get the balance installed and working.
Okay. Councilmember Spitzley, I think-
Yes.
-her question was-
I mean, I, I appreciate what you just said, but I'm hoping that this question was, was, is supposed to be a little different, meaning, you know, how do we know that the inspectors are actually going to the homes and actually performing the inspections? That's what I'm hoping that this question was. And so when you mentioned GPS-
Right.
-and that you were going to be installing GPS in the cars, that pretty much answered my question. But that's what I think the intent of this question was.
Councilmember Garza.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman Spitzley. Because that's kind of my question. I mean, have you looked into getting like LoJack services? Because I know certain contractors use that for their employees' vehicles to make sure that they're not going home, you know, or not, you know, somewhere where they shouldn't be. The reason, I've had a personal experience happen where there was a couch sitting on somebody's lawn, and it was, you know, a pink tag, and, and then I followed up with the code enforcement officer because it was never removed on the day it was supposed to be removed. And that code enforcement officer says, oh yeah, I drove by, and it was removed. Well, it was never, it was never removed. So, I mean, when you're getting closeout issues from Lansing Connect, that tells me that somebody's not doing their job, you know, and they're just trying to fill out the work order as it's completed, and it hasn't been. So has there been a talk of maybe potentially installing LoJack, and if that-
I've never heard of that. I do know that-
LoJack is like a, it's a GPS, so you know where your vehicle is at all times.
Right.
Public service has those.
Yeah. Yes, yes. And that's, that's what I'm talking about. There's only about six EDP vehicles right now that, that are working with that system, and we need to get the rest working.
Thank you.
Uh, next question. Have there been any tickets that have been written against landlords on red tags? I don't know, Jim, whether that's-
I, I didn't check on any history of this. We have the ability to write tickets. We can hold the property owner for a misdemeanor. We could hold the tenant for a misdemeanor if the tenant knows. But I don't have that data. I don't know if you have that in code.
I don't have that data right now. I don't know if that's something that's possible to pull out of BSNA. We're still struggling with BSNA.
Patricia, Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President. I would hope, okay, I would hope that we are not ticketing tenants for, for this. This is a landlord and city of Lansing issue. If a tenant is living in a red-tagged house and they don't have anywhere to go, I hope we are not ticketing them. What we need to be doing is having folks come to them and try to help them find housing. And so as we look at that, you know, we really need, it needs to be process-oriented. It does not, it cannot be punitive against the, the tenant, the person that's renting there and may not have any other place to go.
Mr. City Attorney.
May I address two questions? The number one, not having the data. We have four courtrooms that we prosecute in two full days a week. We do everything on misdemeanor traffic, you name it. So we don't keep records of every, when a, when a case comes in from building, whether it be a red tag or whatever, there's either a ticket or it's a complaint, we process it. And then prosecutors go to court and prosecute. We don't keep records of that without having to dig for it. Now, on the second issue, as prosecutors, we exercise discretion. We have to look at all the facts. If there is a tenant that doesn't know that a property is red-tagged, that's something we would not write, okay? We just wouldn't do it. But if it's a situation where the tenant knows and is carrying off the red tag, then we have a different matter there, okay? But the owners are the focus.
Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you. Just a few things. So I guess if that's the case, even if they do know a tenant who's probably or supposed to be paying rent to the landlord who's responsible, then you should never probably ticket them. But also, we are fighting against basically capitalism, and we live in a society where conditions make money, and having it and not having it is so important, and even rewards ownership of property. And that's a problem. But are we thinking, if the goal is for the landlords to comply, can we think of also possibilities of how to make it easier for the landlords to comply instead of having to build our defenses and our offenses up to go after? Because it's always not ass-cutting dry, and I think that displacement should be the absolute last thing, because I can't speak for, I can only imagine having to be displaced because where I live is red-tagged, not to any fault of my own. And then, because you guys are saying, work with them to find housing, but the reality is, there is no housing, or there's very limited amounts. So really, you're telling them to possibly be homeless or work in shelters, or take a week of a hotel and hope that something else works. So it should be, it seems like it should be life or death as far as displacement. And because there's a difference between electrical issues, where there could be a fire, and having a clogged eze trough where it wasn't taken out quick enough, and it's a lack of certificate, which is different than safety sometimes, and there's dozens on here that's a lack of certificate, which doesn't necessarily mean it's like a, a livable safety issue. It means that something didn't get fixed on time, which also brings me to a point that the lack of contractors in the area and handy people that can actually do work on this is prohibitive for a lot of people. I don't know about the big corporations, but for a lot of other people, there's a lack of people to do work, which would just cause delay, for example, in getting a certificate or having some things fixed. Again, there's difference between electrical, and there's difference between plumbing. One should make people possibly have to leave the house because it's not safe, and go through trying to find housing. And the one, I think people can still live, depending on what it is, but still have the red tag process going on.
Councilmember Jackson, we, I am not aware of one ticket that we have written against a tenant.
Right. And I'm just saying-
It would have been-
We shouldn't. That's good, if that's how you got to do it.
And that would have been brought to my attention. We have not written that. And the, when we got the question, it was a theoretical answer. The owner is liable for a misdemeanor. You know, the tenant actually, under the IPMC, is also, but we are not going to write anything against the tenant unless there's some egregious conduct.
Yes, thank you. But that's just my thoughts as we go on.
Okay. Our next question, and I think we've somewhat answered this, and how does a property become red-tagged situation, and what does that mean for the landlord, the tenant, or owner-occupied resident in a case, as the case might dictate?
Thank you. Yes. So in a typical, in a typical situation where a property is red-tagged, it would be because the unit has been declared unfit, and there's a five or six criteria that would, that, that would fall under if it's being red-tagged for a, a safety issue. And that would be unsafe structures, unsafe equipment, structure unfit for human occupancy, an unlawful structure, and then dangerous structures. It also seems that we are tagging properties for lack of compliance, and that is where I think we need to explore other options.
Okay. Our next question is, how many properties are pink-tagged and have not had a follow-up inspection?
I can't tell you how many properties have not had a follow-up inspection, but I can tell you that currently 329 units in Lansing- but I can tell you that currently 329 units in Lansing are pink-tagged.
Okay. Next, um, how many properties are red-tagged and have not had a follow-up inspection?
I can't tell you how many have not had a follow-up inspection. I believe there's 698 properties that are red-tagged as of March 31st.
Ninety-eight?
No. Six hundred and ninety-eight.
Okay, thank you. Let's see, the next is, how many red-tagged units? How many units are red-tagged because of a lack of rental certificates?
So, I can tell you 126 addresses are red-tagged due to the lack of certificates. I can't tell you how many units that is right now. I will learn to query that and I will provide you with that information.
Vice President Garza.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I know I've asked you this before and I asked Brian McRean this before. And I know that you were interim and I know Shelby is now. But have we put any procedures in place to make sure, so we're tracking our rental certificates? To make sure that, you know, we are actually following up and getting the money that's due? And then therefore finding out if there's any issues with the homes? How are we working on getting an, an active list of who is certified and who is out of compliance?
Oh, we can, we can query who's certified and who's out of compliance.
Well, I, I made that question, I, I asked that before and, and the answer was, no, we don't know. We, we don't have a way of tracking it.
Yeah, we can look up and see who's certified and, we can look up and see if a unit is certified or if it's not.
So, are, are, are you guys actively doing that now? Because I brought this up to the mayor a while ago and he responded and addressed it to me. But about, it was actually about the Simtob properties and they bought. And I heard that they were currently out of, uh, their rental certificates were expired and, and some for years. So, I guess what I'm, what I'm asking is, how, how are we following up and making sure that those rental certificates don't go out of, uh, don't expire?
So, when rental certificates expire, then a letter goes out and we, a letter is automatically generated. And, um, it goes to the property owner and says, "It's time for you to re-up your certificate." And then there's a whole process after that where they are supposed to send in a check. And then, um, we schedule the inspection. And then, um, if the inspection requires repairs, then we have to go through and make sure that those are, repairs are completed prior to issuing the certificate.
Okay, well, that's, 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 I appreciate that. I guess that would be trusting every landlord, that they're gonna send in the check. So, who is following up from your department to making sure that, um, after that letter's sent out to that renter or that the owner of that property, who's following up to make sure that they're actually paying that fee and that that certain, that rental certificate is valid?
Right, so, so I know that we gave you guys a list of properties. If you look on that list, you will see that there is, um, some properties are, are noted as lack of certificate. And, and a lack of certificate could be in place for a period of time. And once that landlord does not comply, then we would issue a failure-to-comply letter. And, um, once the failure-to-comply goes out, then at that point, our recourse is to pink-tag vacant units. It's not a very effective way to do this.
So, is there, has there been talks then to, since that isn't very effective, maybe up the, the rental fee for out-of-compliance?
So, one of the things that we're doing is a fee study, so yes. I think that, that we really need to revamp the whole entire system at this point. And that's one of the reasons why I want to bring in a consultant. I unfortunately am not an expert in code compliance. But yes, we do need to. I agree with you 100%. We need to look at everything.
Thank you.
But I think the one telling thing, I've got Councilmember Spitzley, then Councilmember Jackson. One telling thing is, I as a property owner can pay my inspection fee and have tenants in there and it can be six months later before you inspect. And during that six months, they could be living in a property that's not up to code. Councilmember Spitzley.
You said exactly what I was gonna say.
Okay.
I mean, you know, and, and I know you guys have already heard it and I'm gonna say it ad nauseam. You know, you've got, you have a rental inspection and there are deficiencies like smoke detectors. And there's no mechanism to follow up, bad things happen. And so, the question is, and I think it's, it's part and parcel of the whole thing that you're talking about is that when you, when you go, we, we, we cannot rely on the buddy system anymore or the, or the honor system where we do this rental inspection and we say, "Landlord, you need to install smoke detectors throughout the house." And, you know, trust that they're going to do it because we've seen tragically and I've seen personally, that doesn't happen. And so, we've gotta, you know, unfortunately, we're gonna have to step it up and go back within 30 days and not six months, particularly if families are living there. Because after that, that's on us. You know, we're, we're not doing what we're supposed to be doing. And so, that's, that's, I don't know how we fix that, but we, we can't rely on the honor system anymore because it's not working.
Well, one of the things that we can do is to say, not everything can be a sign-in return. There are some things that we will accept a sign-in return for, but there are some things that we will not accept a sign-in return for.
Okay, I have got Councilmember Jackson and Councilmember Brown.
Just when we talked about the fee review, it made me think of something that I've heard where good landlords say that Lansing is prohibitive to do business and own and rent. And then therefore we would get bad landlords and the good landlords say that the fees, but also the property taxes for non-homestead or rental property is so high compared to other places. So, I'm sure when they do the fee study, they're gonna look at all that. But it's just one thing because it's the difference between fees versus penalties. I agree, penalties can be stiff and punitive and all that. But again, we go back to capitalism, it's still, these businesses have to have money to make the repairs and hire people and do the work and buy the materials. It's not like they're all just so rich where they can just, they're just like holding back their money and don't want to make repairs. I'm not talking about necessarily the huge ones, but there's a lot of, I'm just saying, when we look at the fee, look at whether it sends people away that would otherwise be good landlords.
So, so the, the fees will be based on the cost to administer. That's what the fees will be based on.
Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, President Wood. My question was kind of followed to what Councilman Garza as well as Councilwoman Spitzley, um, with the pink tag, red tag. With that whole process, uh, are we tracking how many people as a result of that inefficiency have been displaced and become homeless? Because we're seeing we have a homeless crisis and there's so many challenges. Are we adding to that? Uh, and if we are, which I believe based on what I've, the testimony I've heard today, we are, um, kind of, what is the process that's, that's taking place or how are we supporting people? You know, um, instead of, you know, really putting them on the street?
Right, exactly. I think that's a question for HRCS and we've been working together to establish some policies and procedures and resources.
We have some further questions down here for HRCS. I think we can, um, have that with that one, if that's okay. Councilmember Brown.
Absolutely, can I ask him one question related?
Sure.
Are you, I guess, for your department, are you guys tracking how many people, you know, end up getting displaced?
As far as, you mean like every day or every week?
Through the, yeah, yeah.
Not at this time.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Council President.
Not a problem. Let's see, the next question is, why are vouchered people placed in red-tagged and pink-tagged properties? And who's checking? I think this goes from some of the issues with 222 West Homes.
Right, yep, that, that definitely was a problem where the landlord of, um, Simtob wanted to rehouse folks. And there were, I believe, six households that he was going to place in units that were pink-tagged. So, those folks are now hotelled. And we're trying to find housing from them. The COC, um, is trying to find permanent housing for them.
So, you, you know, in the future, we're using 222 West Homes as an example.
That's right.
But in, in the future, if you're moving people out, you know, you were there when people were moving out.
What will we do?
And you were talking to the property owner.
Yep.
And they give you an address. Are you, i- is someone then following up to see whether that particular address-
Yes.
Is that part of the process in the future?
Yes, yep, that's one of the things that we talked about with HRCS is that if we're, if, if and when, it's, it's a matter of time. When we have a multi-unit that we need to do this again, um, we will hotel everyone and then we will make sure that the units they're going to are safe before they're thrust into chaos. Because it was extremely chaotic and there were a lot of lessons learned. And we realize, I think everybody realizes how traumatic that experience was for the people who lived in those units. And it was extremely difficult to, to see it. It was extremely difficult to do it. It was not anything that anybody took lightly.
Our next question is, why is HRCS not helping people to find housing instead of paying thousands of dollars when they could cover first and last month's rent at a fraction of the cost? And welcome, we appreciate the fact that you've sat there through a number of questions and now it's your turn.
Good evening, councilmembers. It is my pleasure to be here as I strongly believe that keeping people safe is all of our responsibility. So, we're gonna do our best-
Is the green light on, Kim?
Uh, yep, green light's on. Do I need to get closer?
Yeah, thank you.
All right, how about that?
That's much better.
All right, and as I was saying, I appreciate the opportunity to be here as I strongly believe that keeping people safe is all of our responsibility. And HRCS is gonna do their best to pull their part in this. Um, with me is Joe McDonald, who's our Housing Embudsman. And then to the right of me is, I'm sorry, and to the right of me is Tony Young, uh, who is our Contract Manager Administrator. They will also pitch in if need be to respond to questions. Your first question with regard to our paying thousands of dollars in hotels when they could cover first and last month rent at a fraction of the cost. We would like nothing better than to do just that, and that is to put people in stable housing. However, we are currently challenged with a 38% increase in rent since 2018. Homelessness has increased across the country by 35%. Rent has increased significantly by 38, wait a minute. Rent's increased by 38% and homelessness across the country by 35%. And according to HUD, we are about 8,000 affordable units shy of being able to meet our need. So, with that said, I also want to add that we've learned from Lansing Housing Commission that every day someone's voucher expires because there are no options for them in terms of finding suitable housing. People are being pushed out of their homes due to increased rent. And landowners or homeowners are renting affordable housing to those people with modest means, while those people who are not able to afford are being pushed out into the street. Many living in house and living in cars, others setting up tents somewhere else, couch surfing, living in abandoned buildings. So, there's no place to put them. And rather than to have them out on the street, I would much rather have them in a hotel room.
Councilmember Klaas.
Thank you, President Wood. I, I just want to make a statement here. You know, um, I heard affordable housing again. I have a list of affordable houses right here. We've been told we have a toolbox to use it, but somehow it's got chains around it and a lock. So, I mean, what are we doing here? We've got affordable housing. This is, this is the frustration. I've sat here for two hours now and we've heard, we have a toolbox, um, we have some really great ideas, but that's the same ideas we've heard two months ago. So, you know, I just, I don't understand why we're not here talking about solutions to this, working together. We're just talking about ideas that we've been talking about for two months, probably longer. So, it's, you know, it's all I have, thanks.
Councilmember Brown. And then Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you, I concur with Councilwoman Klaas, thank you for your statement. I was wondering, how, how much are we paying per, uh, for the hotel room per month?
It varies, anywhere between $60 and $70 a night.
So, that's about $18 to $2,100 per month?
Could be, yes.
Do you have a system in place where you have people, if they do need first and last month's rent, um, you know, to get into a place that is available? We haven't talked about that. What happens then? Because $2,000 a month is a really, really nice place in Lansing.
I don't disagree with you. Uh, yes, there are options out there for them to acquire first and last month's rent. Uh, we may help some and so might the HARA, all depending on whether or not they meet the qualifications for HARA.
Have you all worked with, um, I guess, market rate apartments that are less than $2,100 a month? Because if we're saying that there's not a lot of options and we're spending $2,100, that's market rate plus, I believe.
All I can tell you is, housing is not available for the people who can afford it, who can't afford it. The people that we targeted or the people that have come to us and asked for assistance, the people that are out there on the street. So, we can talk about market rate, but most of them cannot afford market rate. And so, they are doing the best they can with securing the housing that's available.
I understand what you're saying, maybe, let me rephrase the question. For example, if we have an apartment at, um, Lansing Apartments and the, it's a three-bedroom, two-bath, and it is $1,300 a month, not $2,100. The hotels, I've had several complaints from several families, it's, you know, one or two-bed, we've all been in a hotel room and they have kids, a whole family, and there's no rooms. So, if we're going to contract out, I guess, hotels at $2,100, we, why not have a, you know, if we're contracting to a marketplace that has three-bedroom, two-bath and they say, "Okay, we're gonna take 10 units and we'll only charge the city $1,100", now we're doubling our capacity to house people in market rate that is up to code, you know, versus some of these hotels at astronomical cost is what, what I'm hearing.
Yeah, I like the idea, Councilman, and I would relish the opportunity to work with such a landlord. But we don't have that going on right now.
Have you reached out to any or-
It's one of the things that, uh, Public Safety suggested to our Housing Embudsman at our last meeting. And we talked about creating a vacancy, a vacancy bank with landlords so that we would reach out to landlords and see if there's an opportunity to let individuals secure housing in one of their dwellings until such time that other housing became available or until such time that they determine that they could remain there.
Okay, thank you.
I have got, uh, Councilmember, um, Jackson, Spitzley, and Hussein.
Just two things I was thinking because we're trying to find solutions. The first is, even though this is a solution, we can't even talk about because of red tape, but $2,100 to house somebody in a hotel would probably be more than enough, well, at least a contributing factor to fix some of the things that need done. But I know that's impossible and Jim will tell me all the reasons why, I'm sure. The other thing is, is I've had, we've heard Barb come before us. We talked about affordable housing with various projects and everybody explained the reason why we needed some of these affordable units that we're gonna house multiple families and, you know, two rooms, various things like that because there's a need out there. And that was one of the reasons why I voted for it. I understand Brown feeling all these different things and people have their different reasons. But when we need to add units, that's one way to do it, is to add units when the time comes up. So, um, even if it was a building that the city or HRCS or somebody had some rooms- So even if it was a building that the city or H R C S or somebody had some rooms available for this type of situation, it's gonna be more room. So it's just part of the solution that we are all looking for. I wonder if it is to look at that affordable housing and use money wisely.
I've got Councilmember Spitzley, Councilmember Hussein.
Since the door was opened and following up on Councilmember Koth's about these red tags, you know, and I wonder how many people are displaced because of these red tags. That's the first thing. We do have an affordable housing problem, and I don't care what anybody says, the studies show we need more affordable housing. So what does that mean, right? I know, you know, I hear, you know, that we're warehousing poverty and we're doing whatever. But if I live in Lansing, I don't wanna go to Hazlet. I don't wanna go to Grand Edge. I wanna stay in Lansing where my family is. It's our responsibility here in town to make sure we have clean, safe, affordable housing. And it's the responsibility of us here, the administration, council, and everybody else to look at this city and make a plan on how we're going to achieve this. Part of that is, you wouldn't, you know, and 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 let's 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 be clear here. These are market rate houses here on this list, okay? Ninety-eight percent, these are market rate houses right here that folks are living in that are red-tagged and substandard. So that gets back to the tools that we have to have in our toolbox. We need to step up our game, okay? And and make sure these people are held accountable. But we also need more affordable housing. Once we have more clean, safe, affordable housing and these people have options, these landlords are gonna step up as well. The problem is right now, to get that housing, two, two and a half, three years, we're already behind the eight ball. And so that's where the crisis is, is that we've let it get to this point now, and it's all of us, myself included, to now where if we even started today and said, we want clean, safe, affordable housing, it's three, four years before that can actually come into place. I'm not saying every, you know, every corner we should do this. We need a plan. And there's nothing wrong with looking at our city from a holistic point of view and saying, these are where the deficiencies are and 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 putting that out so that if somebody wants to come in and wants to invest in the city of Lansing, they can. We need a plan. We as the city need to look at our city and say, we need, we we decide we're gonna need clean, safe, affordable housing. We're gonna go out, we're gonna look at it, and then we're gonna champion it. And that's been the problem in the past. Barb, you can't bring us stuff here, and and it's not your fault, it is what it is. You can't bring us stuff here to the to the council for approval and and it's not championed. And that's the first time I hear hear about it, is when you bring it in, and it's not championed by the administration. That's working in those silos that we keep talking about. We all need to be a part of this. We need to have a plan of how we're gonna fix this affordable housing thing, but it starts here. It starts with making sure these people are held accountable. These are market rate, these are market rate living spaces. This is not, this is not affordable housing. This is market rate. And and they're substandard because these people have nowhere else to go. And then we red-tag them, they're on the street, because we don't have clean, safe, affordable housing for them to go to. So part of, that's, that has to be part of your plan and part of your strategy. It has to be.
Councilmember Hussein, then Councilmember Brown.
Just a quick question, Joe. So we did a couple of weeks ago, till you bring up this idea of reaching out to the Landlords Association and speaking in general, right, with landlords about the this potential of a vacant unit bank or potentially even creating a list of landlords that would be, you know, willing to be part of, like, a rapid rehousing program. That was two weeks ago. What work have you done since that time?
Well, I do have a, I'm on the agenda for the next Landlords Association meeting, so I intend to talk to landlords about then. The, and so, yeah, that's that's where we're at as far as, you know, trying to get on their agenda, getting on their agenda. The, there is, you know, our rapid rehousing is part of our continuum of care, and they are charged with trying to rapidly get people rehoused. That may have had some unfortunate circumstance that caused them to be homeless. And so there's a duty that they that they take on for our community.
Okay, and then another question I have, and and I I don't wanna bleed into the next question, but I'm gonna ask you. When you are the Housing Embudsman, so when a, and we've had some conversations with Public Safety, but I think it needs to be had here in the chambers as part of a broader conversation. So when a unit is is red-tagged, are you, so I saw the fancy flyers and and that's fantastic. Do you actually, historically, have you actually went out there, particularly when we have, we have a property like two-two-two-two West Homes where we have significant displacement? Are you actually out there, boots on the ground, supporting these individuals and and doing everything you possibly can to connect them to resources, not not handing them a flyer? I mean, you truly, you being out there to mitigate the chance that they're they're going to be shelterless. Beyond that, if that hasn't happened, what are we gonna do to change that? What's the plan moving forward?
So that's what we were talking about, Public Safety Committee, how we were gonna address that. Historically, that has not happened. The red tagging, the pink tagging has been not in our in our bailiwick. So, and every day we have a crisis, that's what, you know, our our, what our focus has been. Some of them heart-wrenching, the situations that we encounter, so trying to keep people housed. So in the future, what the plan is, is when we discover that a place is red-tagged and occupied, then we will make make contact with them. And so that's what we did at West Homes, and that's what we're gonna be doing going forward in the future as well.
Okay, so I think of Public Safety two weeks ago, one of the things we talked about, and and Ryan did an incredible amount of work out in the field to essentially, I mean, hand-deliver you all their information you needed to go out in the field and and actually mitigate some of the issues. Something that you said two weeks ago, you said that you were going to, with our social worker, actually start to prioritize the properties in the first ward. I think there was, you know, some fifty percent of those red-tagged units that he had brought forward that we still believe were occupied, that you all were going to go out in the field and you were going to make contact. Has that happened?
No, it hasn't. L P D is, the idea was that we were going to coordinate with L P D's social workers, and they wanted to put a hold on that because of some of the, they needed more clear information about the houses they were going to. So that there was gonna be a process that L P D was going to identify which houses were gonna be, which houses were, are occupied and that, you know, to issue warrants or whatever that process was gonna entail. But before anybody, I mean, that's our goal, not to make sure anybody gets a ticket or a misdemeanor that's living there. There's a reason why they're living there. They have no no place else to go. So that was what the plan was, was that L P D's social workers and myself were gonna go engage with those residents. They, you know, they wanted to put a hold on until they got more clear information, so that's the best I can.
And I and I guess that's, that's my concern here, is that, you know, what I'm hearing is, we have this, we have this, we have this idea, we have this tool. We have, you know, back to Ryan's earlier comments. Really what we don't have, unfortunately, across the board, in my opinion, and I don't know how you fix this, we don't have the fire in the belly for, in my opinion, for this work. We don't have the, we don't treat these matters with the urgency they absolutely deserve. For for us to be waiting on information for two weeks, I I had heard nothing about that. If there's anything we can do to help, I was I was assuming, because of what you all told us two weeks ago, that you were out in the field and you all were doing that work. I am really struggling, you know, to be frank, and this isn't about you, Joe, but about the position. I have yet to hear what we're getting, right, out of that position in terms of forty hours a week worth of work. And the only thing, because we've asked, and we've asked, and I had some of the same concerns about Citizen Advocate, to be to be quite frank. Because when we first contemplated these positions or we had heard about these positions and we approved funding for these positions, I thought we were really going to see people out there in the field advocating, holding people's hands, helping them walk through the process, not just referring them, not just giving them a flyer, not just giving them a number that they can call that they could've found online. The, we're almost to the point where the only thing we can do as council, or at least I personally can do when this budget comes, the budget is before us, but when we actually start doing this work, is to just start looking at those personnel line items and reducing, frankly, those line items by the cost or whatever that cost is for that particular position, to to make it clear that we expect results out of these positions. I just, I I cannot wrap my mind around what some of these folks are doing in the field. And frankly, I think there's some people at the top, they don't know what they're doing, and that's a problem. So so I struggle with that. Autumn's Ridge, you know, I was, I was, to be frank, when I went out to thirteen-seventeen Kalamazoo, where I was bothered. I was bothered by the fact that I wasn't tripping all over individuals from H R C S, that I wasn't tripping over Joe U, that I was after working a fifty-hour, it always kills me when people talk about how hard they're working. I put fifty hours a weekend in my other job, and then I'm still out in the field and I'm not seeing anybody. I'm not seeing anybody that should be there doing actual, the actual work, so that bothers me. So again, that's back to the urgency piece. What about Autumn's Ridge? Have we went out and made contact with the folks at Autumn's Ridge? Have we been doing everything we possibly can to guide them? What about the people that have now been displaced? Because we did, my understanding is, red-tagged twenty-six of those units. Is that correct, back in December? We have Rosalyn Williams in the back. My understanding is that she has been living in a hotel for quite some time now and at her own expense. What are we doing to make that right? Anything?
Well, thank you for that assessment, Councilmember. Every day from eight o'clock in the morning till five o'clock at night, our phones are ringing. There are crises every day. I have fifteen open cases of eviction diversion folks I'm helping right now in addition to the phone calls that I get, that I have to prioritize. Phone calls, emails, and online submissions into our office of what is an emergency and what is not. And so there are emergencies that we are dealing with on an everyday basis. So trying to keep people housed is our top priority.
Okay, can we, real quick with regards to Autumn's Ridge, can you answer that question? What have we done? You made, I mean specifically, have you worked with Rosalyn as an example?
Yes.
You have, hand-in-hand, you've worked with her?
Yes, we've spoken with her.
You've spoken with her?
Yes.
But what, and that's what I'm trying to, I'm trying to get an understanding. We can't recommend, we can't continue to support in budget, we can't, if we don't know what that means. So I guess my question is, again, we certainly can't recommend changes so that we can continue to support a position in the budget. What does that mean? What does that look like?
In speaking with Rosalyn?
Yeah.
Okay, well, first, I'll say, she has my my boss's direct line phone number, so she's talked to her. I've talked to her. We've tried to direct her to different resources where she might be able to find housing. We don't do placement. That is not something we do in our department. We don't do placement, okay, because everybody's got different tastes, everybody's got different wants and what they can afford. So that's not something that we do. So I have talked to her, I've talked to her about her rights and responsibilities, what she can do as a tenant, and so we've helped guide her through that process.
If I'm not mistaken, Joe, I believe you also were looking for apartments on her behalf as well, online. You and I talked about that. We've gone back and forth on how we could help Rosalyn. We've offered to to help her with hoteling. Joe and the H R C S staff are on it every day. And we get calls constantly, as he indicated to you, and our crisis didn't just start two weeks ago. We've been dealing with crisis for the last year with the God of Housing. I know, and I'm not, I'm not taking anything away from anybody, but I just don't want Councilman Hussein to get the impression that nothing's happening because there is a lot of things that are happening within our office. I work with the agencies, I work with individuals. We're trying our best to keep people from losing their housing. There are eighteen hundred, the last I heard, pending evictions in the courts. We're waiting to get ahold of some of those and see if we can help. So we have been trying our best to keep people housed.
Are you done, Councilmember Hussein? Before I turn it over to Councilmember Brown, I just wanna follow up quickly with Councilmember Hussein's questions. I believe we started the issues with Autumn Bridge in two thousand and nineteen, is that correct? And you were before the Public Safety Committee back then when we had, meaning Joe, when we had a number of the tenants come in. We implored you to have a neighborhood meeting out there and to discuss with them the possibility of escrowing their rent and and all of those things. Did that ever happen?
No, we were advised not to get involved with that.
Oh, Lord have mercy on my soul.
Yes, okay, I'm just telling you, we were advised not to get involved with that with the ongoing lawsuit.
This was before the lawsuit. Two hundred and, two thousand and nineteen was before the lawsuit.
I can't recall the dates, but we, I was prepared to do that. I would love to do that. Because it's an important thing for people to know is their rights and responsibilities. I helped create the flyer to make sure people do know their rights and responsibilities. It's an easy way to get that. I can't be everywhere, so that's an easy way to try to communicate.
But we asked you to do that back then, too. In two thousand and nineteen, we asked you to do it in the Housing Ad-Hoc Committee when when we had that. So this isn't the first time.
That's right, and it's always a legal concern. I've asked legal services the same thing, if they would do us a favor and help draft that. Now.
H R C S is paying as part of the grant money for legal services. So if we're not getting help from them, why are we giving them city dollars?
No, they're, they help, they they assist. Part of the information that we have for this legal rights brochure came from them. And I appreciate the Office of City Attorney helping us to draft that and put it together as to form, to make sure that it comports with what's legally what we can tell people.
Councilmember Brown.
Thank you. Real quick to where Councilman Hussein started about, like, we were talking about housing. You said the C O C is doing the rapid rehousing, but we were talking about solutions that the city could provide. And then you said that they're providing it. Working with constituents myself, I know that there's limited per-month requirements. So for example, if you're one person and you need rapid rehousing, they might pay seven hundred. But the landlord might be charging eight fifty, so they won't put them there. So when we're talking about there's no housing available, instead of paying maybe twenty-one hundred for a hotel, if we pay the other hundred and fifty dollars that wasn't covered, then the landlord would be willing to rent to the individuals. So is that type of thing taking place or when it's talk about rapid rehousing?
I believe, and Tony can maybe correct me on this, but I believe all those are dictated by fair market rent. And so, but Tony would be the more of an expert.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, that's correct, Joe. Fair market rent is what dictates what you're allowed to pay out of grants. But your point is well-taken that there are ways to supplement that. If we wanted to take that forward, we could work with them.
Thank you, Tony.
With the H A R A and see if there's a way we could supplement some of the rent.
Yeah, so we probably have.
Because we know there, we know that, I'm sorry, fair market rent doesn't keep up with the the current rates. That it comes along behind a lot of times.
Yes, thank you so much. So there's probably hundreds of houses available for that. Constituents have come to me and it just, it puts me in tears because they have families. And the hotel program, not only is it expensive, but also you can't, you don't have ability to cook or have a, you know, if you have a three- or four-person family to even eat dinner together. So it's really putting someone in trauma and transient. Additionally, when we're talking about affordable housing, I think sometimes going to all the neighborhoods throughout the city, we have two different definitions. So I know that affordable housing, there is kind of a term, affordable housing, which is like a low-income subsidized units. And then there's being affordable as housing. And so I think in Lansing, we have affordable housing that's called fair market. And so I think that we need to expand housing that is fair market as well as making sure those that need supplements are available as well. But the challenge that I see in working with so many constituents and in being a community servant is that we're also not investing in economic opportunity. We're not investing in fully supporting small business, which creates opportunity and income to be able to afford places to live. We're not supporting enough entrepreneurship to help people who have dreams and visions and goals that can create something for, whether it's a service or a product that improves our community and also can be profitable for them and their family as well as really looking at, you know, when we talk about a plan is, how do we look at uplifting and increasing the quality of life of everybody in Lansing? And just providing housing for people, if we're saying that they don't, they can't afford it and there's no support, well, we have to look and 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 get a bigger viewpoint and say, well, how can we help people move forward? I've never heard us talk at the city about helping people with jobs or workforce development, training, and those type of things. And I think it's very important, if we are truly gonna uplift Lansing. And I think it's very important, if we are truly going to uplift Lansing, is to have a comprehensive, multi-dimensional approach and bring all pieces to the puzzle that make a difference in our lives. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Councilmember Garza, and then Councilmember Hussein.
Thank you, Madam President. All right, so we're going round and round here, and I appreciate that, you know, we talked about accountability, and that there really isn't a way to track, you know, what each department's doing, if they're performing or not performing. So, and I apologize, but I don't apologize, you know, Mr. McDonald, I've sent you multiple emails over the years, and I don't think you ever once responded. Kim Coleman, you have, and I appreciate that. But, and I understand it's the administration's policy to not necessarily have to respond to council. However, we were all elected by the people, we're trying to do a job, working together, and we're doing this right now. We're trying to find out solutions of the bigger problem. But I'm hoping that as we're seeing that the communication's not being lost, you know, Adams one know what you're doing, and everybody who does, you know, frankly, when there's no communication back, and I understand that you don't have to communicate back to council, it makes it harder for us, it makes it harder for the residents in Lansing, and I'm hoping that as we're having this discussion, this tough discussion, that we can potentially, you know, start working a little bit better with council and for the people of Lansing. That's all I have to say.
I look forward to that, I appreciate that comment. And I hope that you can feel comfortable knowing that any one of the folks you've sent to me, I've worked on their case. So you, I might not have communicated directly back to you, because we have a line of communication, which is my boss, and so I just ask that folks kind of respect that, that if you want to, you know, get something in my ear or to my attention, that it goes to my boss. Because when I have a myriad of different people I'm working with every day, I can't, I mean, it just makes it so the work stream is much more efficient.
And I appreciate that. However, like Councilman Hussein says, I mean, we all have day jobs, you know, we're all working here, you know, we all have fifty-plus hour day jobs, and we're trying to stay on top of these emails. You know, I was away last week with my family, but I'm still following up with my emails, making sure that, you know, my constituents' voices are, you know, are being heard. So I guess I don't really have too much sympathy when someone says how busy they are or their workload is, because we all have multiple jobs.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yeah, and so this is kind of the, you know, getting back to the, you know, are we operating in silos? We need to break some of that down, and work, you know, both smarter and harder. I heard you say you can't be all places at all times, you're absolutely right. But we do have folks out in the field at all times, right, during, at least during the workday. So are we, are we, is there any cross-training, as an example, with HRCS? Are we doing semi-annual training with code compliance? Are we, to talk about the different programs, to talk about the different resources that are out there? And I'm talking, are you actually working with, not departmental directors, but are you actually working with our code compliance officers that are actually out in the field, making contact with people every single day, to empower them, to educate them, so that they can then be out supporting and scaffolding people?
Yes, so I've attended the, their staff meetings. They all have my information, not only do you guys forward, you know, constituents to me, but they're also, I mean, they're running into folks in distress, and that's where that communication starts, is that they will refer to folks to me all the time on whether it's red tag or somebody they come into out in the field, come into contact with. And were you going to add something else?
Well, might mean that I've been irrelevant, Councilman Hussein, but I was just going to add that Brian McGrath and I set up scheduling quarterly meetings with our staff, and the intent there was to make sure that we all knew what the other one was doing, that we shared information about each one's department, we did shared training, we did a number of things. So it may not be specifically what you were talking about, but yes, we do have that kind of relationship, and have had.
Okay, and then one other thing for, just, again, as we're talking about silos, one of the things that we did talk about this in Public Safety, we had talked about, actually there was an effort, there was an actual effort to create some measure of kind of this umbrella leadership, so that you didn't have building safety, you didn't have code compliance operating in complete silos, and not knowing what the other shop was doing. I know that there was some bucking of that by some folks that are no longer here. Are we looking to, because we constantly are hearing from code officers and folks from, that are in building safety and clerical workers and the like, that the silos are a huge problem, in terms of communicating, in terms of moving issues out in the field to make sure that we have appropriate housing stock? Are we looking at that model again, now that some folks are gone? Are we looking at re-implementing that? Where are we at with that?
What model is it that you're referring to?
And I saw Shelby shaking her head, so I think Shelby knows what I'm talking about. There was actually an effort, we were going to have, we actually brought Steve Swan in. And Steve Swan was supposed to be kind of, at least it's my understanding, the mayor certainly, because he speaks at the, at the dais, there was supposed to be some measure of this umbrella leadership, right? But my understanding is, we had some folks that were, that found themselves beneath Steve, frankly, on the totem pole, that bucked that and filed grievances and everything else. So where are we at potentially re-implementing that, or are we just not able to?
Wait, Shelby's been working on this, so.
Yeah, so since I've been out here now, just shy of a month, you know, it's clear that we don't have the right policies and things in place to kind of run the place effectively, and I think everybody here would agree that we can, we can do some strengthening in that department. I think the oversight part of each of our management right now could be supported by potentially a deputy in that department. We went back and forth on whether we wanted to divide up the area and have an enforcement wing versus kind of the proactive building safety development side. But then there's, again, that concern about splitting people up and creating yet another silo, and does it make sense to add, you know, a deputy to support those managers and these types of issues? Certainly, you know, hiring an expert on code to go through and develop the right policies for us to follow is going to be, you know, priority number one for us right now, to make sure that we're doing the things we're supposed to be doing consistently. But again, adding some more structure to help support those managers with training, with follow-up, making sure that we're not losing sight of kind of the end goals here. So that's kind of where we're at right now. Unfortunately, there's no one way to do this. I mean, we could, we could divide it up into five separate departments, right? There's just, there's not one quick answer for this. But I think to start, adding that support for those managers would be a good, good step in the right direction. And after, you know, a period of time, we can reevaluate and see if that still makes sense, or if we want to go back to dividing up the department. But right now, because they're so intertwined, I'm not comfortable just dividing it up right now. I do think that there, there has been kind of a rejuvenation of communication out there. I know since Barb and I have been there, we've been having weekly staff meetings with the management team. I'm not sure how often that team had been meeting in the past, but sharing things like, hey, this new development's coming, or this thing's happening, you know, we heard it at cabinet, that type of information. And it has already improved, I think, each management section knowing what's going on and what projects we've got coming. So I think just simple things like staff meetings are really helpful to share that information. So we're trying to do all of those things to kind of develop the right communication tools and keep everybody in the loop.
I'll add, and we, when Steve was there, this is, this is what we had discussed doing, whether it was going at, director, deputy, that kind of, each of them have a chance to look at different parts and work together. We looked at dividing the department. And we looked at that again, when Shelby came in, we had a good conversation with council leadership, and we listened to their opinions. And so this is, this is where we're going towards, in terms of having, having Barb, having someone else out there, in essence, working to coordinate between building safety, code compliance, development, planning and zoning and parking. There are five departments that are interrelated, that, like Shelby said, could all be their own department, but all have pieces of each other. So whether it's a compliance, or whether it's development, these are all pieces that are working together. And I think Shelby and Barb have done a good job trying to get ahold of this, and we hope to have that new system in place pretty soon. But again, it'll be flexible, because if it doesn't work, then we'll readjust.
Last thing, and I apologize. One of the things you talked about, going back to, I think it's critical, when we talk about the policy review, and we look at, top-down, again, review, and we look at recommendations and implementation, you said that, in terms of the consultant, that we're going to have an expert. One of the things, and maybe this is me just being anticipatory, and maybe me having some measure of fear, that's completely unfounded, I really hope what we don't do is bring somebody back that has essentially been brought up through a system that we now hear has really historically not had any policies, not had any clear procedures, and has just really been run in a disastrous way?
Yeah, I can assure you that that's not the plan right now. I think, and even from just my personal opinion, having an outside opinion with the experts that enforce this code, that know the books and how other cities do it, probably would be good for us to learn. Now that being said, I think our last talk was really putting out an RFP or seeing who we might be able to get, if there's a company or a person that'd be willing to do this for us. I know I don't have anybody identified, and I don't, I don't think Ms. Kimml does either. So I think the plan would be to put it out and see what we get, if there's a professional company that could do this for us.
Okay.
All right, Councilman Brown.
Thank you, Vice President Garza. To HRCS, I know that we, you guys had spoke about all of the crises happening in Lansing, and so my question would be, are there any people in HRCS working after five P.M. to help people in Lansing when there's a crisis? The late Dr. Joan Jackson Johnson, I know she was always on call, could you talk about that? As well as, we have 1.35% of the general funds going to human services, nonprofit agencies, about sixty to seventy. Do we have any allocation or accountability to say, hey, if we're going to do these services in our city, it's supposed to be used for the needs of our city, have needs after five, that people are going to be available to deliver those crisis services?
Councilman Brown, I assure you that after five is just the time, and that anytime anybody has ever need to reach me with regard to anybody out there in that community, I've made myself available, whether it was after five or on the weekends. And your other question with regard to our contracting with agencies to help make sure that services are available after five, yes, we do.
Is there a, I guess, list, or is it public information, and, you know, thank you if you've been available, you're one person, so if there's crisis going on, are there, you know, employees or services available after five? And then if there are agencies, what services are provided after five, so the people can know and be able to access them?
Since my start here, I haven't had anything major that has occurred that required all hands on deck just yet. The kinds of crisis that we've dealt with after five centered around getting folks off the street when we had really bad weather, making certain that they were covered if they wouldn't come in. We have worked with the street, I call them path, street outreach to assist us with services, with individuals who are in need of housing after five. We have it set up with police and fire that in the event that they encounter somebody after five that need to be housed, and they can't get them in the shelter, that they can take them on to a hotel. And so we've got a system set up, whereas we don't have to have all hands, or haven't had to have all hands on deck just yet after five, but in the event that there is one, we're ready.
Okay, so put people in hotels. Lastly, HRCS, I know that you guys are saying you're doing a lot of services, but I've had several complaints, you know, and I've brought them to you with the customer experience. I really have not had constituents say, well, HRCS was such a blessing. So it's been several testimonies we've heard, you know, even here, as well as complaints. Is there any training that you all take to how to, that you have for your staff, to, and yourself, as far as how to serve people, you know, who are in need or in a crisis, and serving people with dignity when they're, you know, at their most vulnerable moments? So I wanted to, wanted to question that.
I appreciate that question, Councilman Brown. By trade, I'm a mental health therapist, and so I understand what it means to treat people with respect and dignity. I know what it means to observe my staff, so if they aren't treating people with respect and dignity, I know how to approach them and ask them to make the change. So we work real hard at just that, making sure that people that come to us, we give them everything we got. Now, what they ask for may not be what we can produce, which doesn't necessarily render a favorable outcome, or a praise in a particular meeting, but I just know that we give them all we got.
And I do understand that not being able to meet the needs, so there is no formal training that you guys go through?
We have had formal trainings, but specifically with regard to customer service, we have not gone there.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, there's a couple of questions that we've sort of gone over, so we're going to move down to how does HRCS department delegate services to different nonprofit organizations?
Hi, Kim's deferred this to me, because I'm a contract manager, and I work with the sixty or seventy or eighty agencies that are out in our community. And they're a pretty amazing group of people, I have to say. They provide a wide variety of nonprofit services. They are the experts in working in their particular areas, both with, just depending on what kind of service you're looking for. And so the advantage we really have from the city perspective is that we're able to look out there and see what's out there, where are the gaps, and who are the people that we can tap, in an emergency especially, so that, and we, we're pretty familiar with the services that they provide, so that if there's something we need that has a lot of similarity to that, we can, they can pivot quickly to create a program or expand a program, that we can then hopefully work with them, expand or revise their contract to include. So we were fortunate in this situation, that we already had a hoteling program going. I mean, I don't consider it fortunate, really, but the fact that we had it meant that we could respond very quickly, so that these folks didn't have to be on the street. And we felt like that was a good use of what we were doing, not that we feel like hoteling is the last resort for sheltering, but it's better than being on the street. So that's, that's really, I guess, where we, our perspective is that it's best to utilize the people in the community who really have the expertise and the skills to address particular issues, whatever they might be. We have a really wide range, as you've probably read in the past, it's on our website, about all the different areas that can fall under this 1.35. It's, it's a very wide scope. And I just wanted to address Jeffrey Brown's concern about employability. That is something that we've been looking very closely at, and we would really like to expand our response from the contracts that we put out there. We're very interested in expanding employability skills, so we can help uplift people, that's a priority.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Spitzley, and then Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Madam President. Just briefly on that issue, I think we need to be careful. We have a financial empowerment center, and so we need to be careful that each department is doing what each department is supposed to be doing, and then making sure that we're talking amongst each other, because when you start merging things and dipping into other people's departments and zones, then that's when, that's when balls are dropped. So I just, I think it's great, and I think we do need to do that, but again, that, that's a coordinated thing, and it gets back to like the silos, and we have to stop operating in silos. But I wanted to ask you, so, you know, of the sixty and seventy programs that, that we provide funding to, or whatever, can you talk briefly about how do you, what is your process to make sure that they are being appropriate fiduciaries of this money that's passed through to them? And do you perform auditing of their program to make sure that they are spending that money wisely? And, and then the second thing, so I can be done, is we are hearing, and I always like to, and I'm glad you're here, because I always like to go to the horse's mouth, but is there a, when you talk about hoteling, and is it, is it a referral that you guys, you, HRCS does? Do you have a particular hotel that you work with? Because we're hearing the City of Lansing's hotel, or HRCS, we heard that in our ad hoc committee on housing, and I'm, you know, I'm concerned about that, I have a whole bunch of concerns about that, if that is true. So, you know, what kind of auditing and follow-up are you doing to make sure that these organizations are being, you know, appropriate fiduciaries of the money that's passing through? And then the second thing is, for hoteling, you know, does the City of Lansing have a hotel that they, you know, that is their go-to, or they, you know, they put people in versus any other place? Thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
You're welcome.
I'll do the first one. If you want to do this one. I can answer the first question and then I'll defer to my boss for the second one. So, in the instance of monitoring and overseeing, oversight of the grants, we have a quarterly reporting process for each of the agencies. So, but before they even get a contract, we do a capacity review where we look at, you know, what is their past experience, including fiduciary and financial? We ask to look at, you know, any of, we have a whole list of documents that we review before they are contracted with. And then, once they do have the contract, so we want them to be, you know, a good, stable organization that the city feels comfortable contracting with in the first place. Then, the next thing is that we have a quarterly reporting process, so we ask them to turn in reports on a regular basis. We review those, we get back with people if we think there's slow spending or too much spending, and then, how are you gonna keep this program going all year because we contracted with you for a year term and that sort of thing? So, and then, we share information with each other. I bring issues to Director Coleman, and then, we can, we do have termination clauses in our contract.
And when have you, when is the last time you've terminated, terminated someone for inaction? If you, if you don't know, that's fine, I'm just curious.
Yeah, I'm fine, sorry.
So, okay, so not recently, right?
It seems like, it seems like that we did end some contracts not that long ago, but I'm, I'm unfortunately not, not pulling up which ones they were.
I, I don't need specifics, but you, you are saying that you, you have, you have eliminated, okay, thank you.
Were you done, Councilmember Spitzley?
Yep, and as for your second question.
Yep, I'm sorry.
Hoteling began, I'm sorry, should I proceed?
Go proceed, please. My fault.
Began with the pandemic, when we needed to separate people who were ill from other folks in the shelters. Many of the shelters were, had established relationships with a number of hotels that were willing to reduce their expense and allow those folks to stay there. Advent House Ministry was one of them. And so, Advent House Ministry works with, I think it's about three hotels that she's assisted us with doing the placement for. So, we don't reach out to the hotels directly at all. It's a part of our contract for emergency shelter.
Okay, Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Council President. Out of the, thank you for your testimony today, out of the 60, 70 agencies, and today we talked about kind of having a sign and return form policies where it's not really verified. So, out of the agencies, you're getting the documents and reports on a quarterly basis, but how many, or how often are you going and doing site visits and following up with the actual recipients of service to do like a survey and check to see if they actually got services and what the quality of services was versus, you know, just what they're providing to you saying here?
I need to interrupt you for a second. Apparently, we're getting word that city TV is down, so the people in the back, if it's not up, if we could take a look at that? Thank you. Go ahead, Councilmember Brown.
Thank you.
I'm sorry to interrupt.
Oh, no problem. Versus, thank you for that opportunity to speak, versus, you know, just taking the report saying, well, we serve, you know, 30 people and so, we deserve the money.
You made a reference to a procedure that EDP uses.
So.
But I, I didn't quite understand that reference.
Okay.
Because that isn't our, I mean, that's not.
So, I apologize, so let me explain it a different way. You indicated that you have agencies that sign up through an application process to deliver a service. The nonprofits, you said about 60 or 70. Then, you said on a quarterly basis, they provide reports to indicate and that they delivered the service and producing the outcome that we contracted them for. What I'm asking is, are you all doing actual site visits? When is the last time on the agencies and talking with the actual constituents or customers receiving the service to determine that it was actually delivered and done with quality and dignity?
We would do that more on a basis of if someone, if you know of an agency and you think there's a concern, we might go out there and follow that up. We do do monitoring annually of different agencies, it's a sampling. And it's also, we think we need to get out to this one because we have some red flags that have, you know, presented themselves, so.
So.
We do it, so we do it annually, but we don't go to every single agency annually because we're not able to do that with our current staffing. Obviously, COVID sort of threw a wrench into some of that, but I, you know, but I definitely pursued some of that anyway through phones and virtual kind of things. So, yeah, so monitoring does happen and we ask people for sign-in sheets and that sort of thing to show their documentation of numbers and such. So, we use different methods like that.
So, you don't have a.
To do it. We have not done, we haven't gone in and done a survey of participants. That would be difficult to conduct, but we could, we could pursue some ideas about how we might be able to do a sampling sort of thing because they don't give us their names necessarily. We don't go away, we don't require them to give us the names of the people they serve as a confidentiality measure. But if we look at a list, of course, I'm looking at a list of names and that sort of thing, but I don't take copies with me. But if you have some thoughts about doing participant surveys for each of these agencies, we do expect them to conduct those and we expect them to provide us with feedback and sort of results, summaries, so.
Well, thank you. I don't think that agencies, if they have complaints, are gonna report them to you, so it seems like.
Complaints, actually, they, they should be reporting complaints to us, yes.
But you're holding them to, if they're a bad actor, to provide you with bad information to get the funding, which is a conflict of interest.
Potentially.
To get their funding taken.
Yeah, potentially, but usually, you know, people, this is not that big of a town, people talk, things, information gets back to us.
So, I've had several, you know, and I've, we've talked before this meeting tonight about several constituents complaining on agency providers, and so, it sounds like you guys don't have a policy which I would suggest that you visit and do annual site visits on these agencies.
We are doing that.
As well as, it's very, it's, I wish it was different. As a resident of Lansing, that we do not reach out and talk to anyone getting help to figure out from their mouth what the truth is and what they're experiencing.
Okay. Are you done?
I was also gonna ask quickly with Barb, when is the last time that we have done code inspection on these hotels that we're sending people to?
Code doesn't do inspections of hotels, Fire Marshal does.
Fire Marshal.
So, that's a question that.
To the Fire Marshal.
Yeah, to the Fire Marshal.
So, if we can get that, I don't know.
Okay. Okay, Councilmember Claus.
Thank you, President Wood. Real quick, we were talking about hoteling. Do you know statistically how many people are turned away per week from the hoteling program?
No, that information was not given to me recently, but what I will tell you is that we have prioritized with regard to the people who are hotelled with hopes of freeing up some of the room in some of the shelters for others. And so, our priorities for hotels would be families with children, it would be seniors, it would be individuals with special needs and/or those who are medically fragile. And so, we are reaching out and making sure that those, that vulnerable population is taken care of with hopes that individuals would have a better chance at securing a space in one of the shelters. So, in the beginning, we weren't getting folks turned away because she was helping as many folks as she could who met that criteria. Because funding has been used and is now rather low, we're having to have the approval through us. And even still, we've not turned anybody away that I'm aware of.
So, you're saying that no one has been turned away from the hotel program?
That I'm aware of.
Joe, would you agree with that assessment?
As far as I know, correct, yes.
Okay. I spent three months with the gentleman that I had to call Advent House and make a personal plea to get him in because he was turned away by your department, just, just an FYI. We just got him housed through generous donations for his deposit from folks. And he needed help and we gave it to him, so I just want to make that point clear. Did anyone at this table here go to the 1317 Kalamazoo inspection where the people from the 2222 Home Street were shuffled to?
No, I went to, I was at 2222 West Home Street on three different occasions. And I wanted to also clarify, LPD social workers joined me there as well. I was there Thursday morning with Barb and Shelby, but I did want to make sure that, you know, our process of working with LPD social workers, that's a real, a real thing. And so, I did want to make that clear, I mean.
Thanks, Joe. So, no one was at 1317 Kalamazoo for the inspection?
No, there was.
Okay. So, who, when we, when we had to figure out that these people had no place to go because it was pink-tagged, did anybody call either Director Coleman or Joe? Did either of you call Advent House to make these arrangements?
Yes, yes, we were there, I was there all day Friday, not at, not at Kalamazoo, but at West Homes to make sure that nobody was gonna be left there over the weekend, so.
Okay, I'm, because I'm confused, because I, Barb, weren't you on the phone with Advent House, making arrangements?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I don't know if I called Advent House directly or Kim Coleman, I can't really remember.
If I can clarify, Advent House and I spoke and she couldn't reach, and so, I gave her Barb's direct number because she needed specifics about the people who were, who were displaced. And so, we were very much involved in this, Councilman.
Okay, well, and I was too, you know, full-time job, I was there at the inspection. It was deplorable, so, thank you for clarifying.
Okay, our next question is, how are the residents notified of unsafe housing conditions?
So, if, if we tag an occupied property, then the residents are told by the code enforcement officer of the conditions and that they must vacate, and then, they're provided with the resources as well that we discussed. And, and then, also, a letter is mailed to the homeowner, the property owner, and a letter is mailed to the tenant as well.
Okay. All right, our next question is, when does HRCS engage with residents of unsafe housing conditions to assist them? I think we've had answers on that already. Okay, our next one is, why are we openly discriminating against single males in hoteling? I've heard several times that we don't have money to help males with singles, that are singles with a dog. Is that not illegal and do they not deserve to live, they do not deserve to live under a bridge?
I agree. And if I can add, there are no gender-specific programs or services being offered by the HRCS, as I indicated earlier to you, with regard to the priority of those people being hotelled. That's how that's being managed.
We've got three more questions. Regarding 2222 homes, what outreach was done with the residents from the time the units were first inspected until they were red-tagged?
So, by that question, I, I don't understand.
I think.
Because when we inspected that day, we red-tagged them, but I think you're referring to.
Before they became red-tagged. Some of those units were pink-tagged, you know, and then, there was reports that the property owners were putting millions of dollars into the buildings and nothing happened and.
Right.
Then, they eventually were red-tagged. I think that's the essence.
I can't answer that because I don't know.
Okay.
I can tell you that when building safety tagged the building, the team and I met with the residents that were present and we explained that the building had been deemed unsafe and that they could not say, stay there overnight and they couldn't live there until the building was made safe. At that time, SIMTob assured us that they would move all residents to unsafe, or to safe housing units, which we found out later that they didn't do. We explained to SIMTob that residents could not immediately be moved. They, we explained to them that if residents couldn't immediately be moved, that they needed to be hotelled because the building was unsafe to occupy. The code enforcement officer, Tom Berry, was there with us on-site along with several building safety personnel and the Fire Marshal. And Tom Berry provided all the residents with the, with the resource brochures. And upon leaving the building, we notified HRCS and also notified the mayor's office and also notified Adam and President Wood, and then, later in the day, notified the entire council.
Councilmember Spitzley, and then Councilmember Hussein.
Thank you, Madam President. I think we're missing a step here. So, for me, there's a time for the pink tag to the red tag. So, you know, and I guess, you know, this is hindsight, but I think we needed, it's for clarity's sake, what was that time span between code enforcement pink-tagging it to code enforcement red-tagging it? I ask because I walk by there almost every day.
Right.
And I walked by there in the summertime and, you know, and made calls about the trash and the construction material. And so, I'm, I'm trying to wonder, because we don't want it to get to red tags, so there's a whole span to me of things that can be done before it absolutely gets to red tags, so I'm wondering what that time span was.
Right, so first of all, let me explain to you that that building was not pink-tagged. That building had a valid certificate that was issued in June of 2022. And my understanding of the events was that the roof started leaking in November and continued to leak and leak and leak and that the building owners pulled a permit in January, but work on the roof did not start until the day that we showed up out there with building safety.
Surprise, surprise.
So, that roof leaked openly for months, to the point.
So, that is, that is correct.
To the point, right, to the point where garden-level unit ceilings fell in.
Yeah.
Because the water was leaking so bad, water was running inside the walls, it was absolutely terrible condition. Some of the units were red-tagged, there were a portion of the units that were red-tagged, but a lot of the units were still occupied.
So, Barb, and I know that you're, I, I, I'm gonna kind of put, I'm gonna jump in here because, you know, the roof flew off during that high-wind time, remember that roof flew off? The roof at Jolly Road flew off. So, I remember when the, when the roof flew off on there, but I gotta tell you, and, and, you know, that before that, they were red-tagged at one point, and I don't know if they were taking up, the tags were taken off, I don't know what happened, but they were red-tagged before that. But again, you know, and, and, you know, not, you know, when I'm calling code, when you're calling code, there's, there's just a disconnect. And so, that roof and that, you know, construction material, and we, we, I know I called, so I can imagine that you called.
Oh, yeah.
It's, it's there and, and we're calling and we're, and so, there's no follow-up. Or if there is, nobody's coming back and saying, Councilmember Spitzley, I was out there, you know, we talked to them, we've got a plan on how to address it. And so, that's where I'm getting at is, how do we get to here? Because there's a whole bunch of steps in between there that I'm hoping that you guys are gonna be looking at, you and Shelby are gonna be looking. are going to be looking at, you and Shelby are going to be looking at, to, to make sure that we're doing a whole bunch of stuff before we get to the point where we have to rehouse people.
Right, that's, I agree with you 100%. That is something that needs to be taken into consideration very seriously because we don't ever want to do that again. That was a terrible thing to see people living in those conditions.
Uh, Councilmember Hussein?
No, you actually took the words out of my mouth. So what, what is really concerning to me is that the roof blew off in November.
Yeah.
And so blew off in November. We had, that came on the heels of, you know, a number of us and tenants bringing a number of issues to, you know, who we thought were, were supposed to be out in the field doing the work. We had, you know, permits that had been finaled. We had, you know, even prior to all of this, we had certificates that had been issued that probably should have never been issued because of the condition of this property, right? This did not happen overnight, we keep saying that. And so I, I was going to get to the timeline and discuss the fact that we have got to make sure that we actually have a process in place that we're able to apply with fidelity because that, I cannot believe, again, the roof blew off in November and here we are in April and they still don't have a roof. So I mean, that's, yeah, that's a problem. It's a absolute failure of the system.
Our next question would be to the administration, to the mayor. What have you done administratively to combat this issue?
Well, we're doing an up and down review. Everything you're hearing right here from, from Barb, from Shelby, from Kim and Joe and Tony, we are looking at this department top and bottom, code compliance, to see what's, what needs to change, what, what were the failures, what are the good things that are going on? And we're, you know, we're going to explore all of it. We put Shelby, who's the chief strategy officer, into this to dive down deep into it. We're going to get the staffing and personnel right. We're going to make sure that the processes work. We'll, we will recommend changes that we think council needs to make. If there's any, we'll make, you know, you heard everything from Barb. Certainly, we're listening to all of your ideas and thoughts and those will all go on the list. And if there's anybody here at council that has, you know, ordinance changes that you want to share with me, I'm happy to take a look as well and I look forward to working with you on that. So we're doing a top-to-bottom review and I think that looking at the system and making sure we have an effective system moving forward is what we can do to make sure that, that we are on top of these, these issues.
I, I think a couple of things. One, I appreciate your comments, but I think we need to make sure that we have some type of timeline so that we're able to judge and be able to understand whether we are making progress or not. That, that's extremely important. And again, having sat in a number of meetings with you last year when some of these same issues were discussed, I, I think if anything, we should have all learned that we can't assume that things are being done. There was evidence that there were things that needed to be corrected that didn't get corrected. And if we're going to make progress on this and move in the right direction, we have to make sure that we're doing the checks and balances and that, and that we're having some type of accountability. Councilmember Brown?
Thank you.
You're next.
That was the actual word you ended on was, was my question, Mayor. Accountability seems like it's at the forefront of a lot of these issues. Is there any reason that there's never been any employee evaluations to hold employees and staff accountable under your leadership?
We do them with, with, I do them with department directors. I do, I do annual meetings and conversations, evaluations with them. In terms of the employees, I have to look into our CBAs and talk to our, our union folks, our union representatives on why that would have been removed in contracts in the past. And I mean, it's time-consuming. It's, it's, it is challenging when you have 900 employees and, and, but supervisors, I know we have some supervisors in some departments that will evaluate and do annual reviews and things like that, but in terms of an official, here's the form that everyone uses. We don't have a centralized form. So I do it with my department directors every December and I, we just don't have anything standardized that, and that's something we can certainly collectively bargain. We all deal with the, the contracts and we can add that to a contract if that's something that's interested. But it's worth talking to different department directors to see how they and their supervisors interact with their employees for review every year.
Councilmember Hussein?
No, sorry. I, I'm just, I'm, I'm still just absolutely stunned that we don't have evaluations. We talked about as an example with code compliance. We have, we are promoting people from premise to code. We're promoting people from code to lead housing. We're promoting people from lead housing inspector to code compliance manager. How are we doing that if we have no evaluations? If we, you know, and even when we look at our districts as an example and, and we try to come up with effectiveness and we try to come up with, you know, intra-departmental, you know, policy change, we have, we have no idea in terms of time on task. We have no idea in terms, we, I mean, how do you put a PIP or an IDP together for, yeah, I mean, you don't. So how do you ever professionally, how do you ever professionally grow in these departments without evaluations? I don't understand.
I mean, it's part of the job of our supervisors. Our supervisors are there to supervise and review and evaluate.
But I, I'm not certain that that's been happening. And since that's not been happening, then it becomes the job of the people at the top to hold supervisors accountable.
Our supervisors are doing, are they doing annual, you know, evaluations, one-form evaluations?
I, I hate to interrupt you, Mayor, but if they were supervising, we wouldn't be where we are today.
Well, what we're talking about, you're talking about everything throughout the city. We have one department where we have issues that we are reviewing. We have many, many, we have 13 departments with lots of different pieces moving and you all know that. In this one case, I'm not going to disagree with you, but if you want to talk about the city in general, we do have some very good supervisors that review their employees and what they do and it, and it works. In this case, we have issues and we are evaluating it top to bottom and we are moving forward with new, with procedures and policies that we haven't had before.
I want Council, Councilmember Spitzley.
Not to belabor the point, but, but the issue is if you don't have formal evaluations of your employees and an employee, if there is misconduct or whatever and you let that employee go, you are opening yourself up to litigation and lawsuits each and every time because that employee doesn't know why they've been let go and so they assume. So they assume that it's X, Y, and Z because there is no record, no performance appraisal, no performance review. I was chief of legal for the Department of Natural Resources, you know, thousands of employees. And it's not a collective bargaining thing, it's an administrative thing. And, and, and again, this is just for me that, and I would have never brought it up, but the fact of the matter is if you're not having annual performance appraisals, you can't fire anybody because you haven't, what are you, what are you comparing their behavior against? You can't promote anybody because what are you, what are you comparing their behavior against? And so, you know, it's, it's, I'm not saying that, I, I think we have great people, so don't get me wrong. We have great people in the City of Lansing. They are dedicated, frontline employees, but everybody needs an appraisal, an annual appraisal to stay on task and to set them up for promotions. If I don't have an appraisal and you get a promotion, I'm thinking something. And then the next thing I'm going to be doing is calling somebody to sue because I feel I should have got a promotion over you because there's nothing there to say, well, Jeff did X, Y, and Z and Patricia, you didn't quite meet the cut. So that, I think that's what we're talking about here, so.
Thank you. At, at this time, was your hand up or were you distracted? Okay. At, at this time, I want to, first of all, thank all the employees that were here this evening to answer these questions. I want to thank council members who took it out of their time to be here for this special committee of a whole that started at 5:30 and were now almost nine o'clock. So I appreciate that tremendously. This is an extremely important issue. There were a number of things that came up as part of this discussion and what I'd like to do is we're going to pass this on to public safety committee and we're going to ask the public safety committee do a committee report once a month to keep us informed at council as to where things are and the timelines and the, and the different issues that have come up. One of the last questions was, what ordinances do we need city council to do to end this cycle? And that will be part of, again, the information and the things that you're dealing with, Councilmember Hussein, at this time. So...
I would recommend that you take a look at the, the red tag ordinance. One of the issues that we have had in the past, and I think Barb relayed this, is when we red-tag, you have to have people out immediately that day. Kim and, and Brian McGrane had a process where when we were going in to evaluate, we needed to give time so that Kim could get people rehoused, people could get rehoused. But with the order, with the red tag ordinance, there's no option. It's, as soon as it's red-tagged, they are, they are evicted. So I don't know if there's the ability to have a grace period where we can take the time to relocate people from the day that it's red-tagged to the day that they are displaced. That is an ordinance issue. And again, we tried to, tried to navigate that by not necessarily red-tagging immediately, but that's basically putting off the ability to say you're in bad housing. So I hope you all will take a look at that and certainly, I know Kim is, is interested, I'm sure Barb and Shelby as well, in working with you. It's just one small piece, but in terms of not making people homeless, you know, on the same day they find out that they're living in a red-tagged house because it was red-tagged, that is an important piece of, of the, the compassion and the grace that was asked for by several of the council members.
All right. Councilmember Hussein?
Just very quickly, first of all, public safety committee right now meets the second and fourth Tuesdays, 3:30, 10th floor of, of city hall. If people want to be engaged in that work, certainly we'll take that up on a bi-weekly basis and we'll, I'm sorry, first and third.
First and third.
First and third, I'm getting committee, meetings mixed up. So first and third, I apologize. But that is Councilwoman Wood and myself, Councilmember Claus. So I know we, we are eager for the opportunity to continue to, to research this, but, but really, again, being solution-oriented, come up with, with obviously coordination with our administration, our city attorney's office, but come up with some real solutions and we will start to get after this issue. That being said, we have a young lady in the audience, sorry, Rosalynn Williams, who has had a number of issues. I know you know. She has tried to work, I think, in earnest with folks within our HRCS, maybe even economic development and planning and potentially even, I'm sorry, law. I'm going to ask you personally that before she leaves tonight, she sat here through the duration of this meeting, that you actually personally connect with her tonight. And just to hear the concerns, the issues that she's dealing with, what her experience has been, she's tried, she's tried to navigate the bureaucracy here and, and I'm hoping you can come up with some solutions with your team. Thank you.
Vice President Garson.
All right, thank you, Madam Chair. Okay, so I don't, I'm not sure if we can change the ordinance regarding the red tag issue in case if it's a, a health, safety issue. You know, I'd hate to be, you know, accountable for some, someone getting, you know, hurt or possibly die in that situation. However, I don't know if we can implement some more accountability regarding the code enforcement officers for not following up. Because, I mean, there's been plenty of apartment buildings in the City of Lansing that went into a red, red tag status after a year or so of not being, not following up by certain code officials. So, I mean, I'm hoping that you guys can put some kind of procedure in place to follow up with the code enforcement officers. If there is a, an issue at a property and it's not followed up and then it ends up going into a red tag state, status a year later, I mean, it should never even get to that point. I mean, we should make sure we hold our code enforcement officers or whoever it is accountable.
Okay. That it? All right, with that, we are adjourned.